Thank you, everybody for coming. I'll open the meeting before the pledge of allegiance. We have a lot of new new faces here from staff and trustees. We started doing these meetings four years ago. We had a, we had certain meetings, we had a moderator. And the moderator thing kind of fizzled out, wasn't really a great fit for what we were trying to do. But we did do some additional meetings like this and kind of use what would be called like traction model. And we got away from it a little bit. And I think it's good for us to do these, you know, I say quarterly meetings, but you know, twice a year at least to kind of look at this time of the year, like after budget projects, at least towards the end of the year, you know, maybe January timeframe, where we're at, what we need to do to get ready for the next budget year. Kind of a more informal setting roundtable with directors and trustees, more of an open forum. And so, you know, those of you that are new to this, whether you're staff wise or trustee wise, welcome and we'll open this. I did some kind of, we don't really have a whiteboard or anything here, but I did a general agenda and we'll follow it for for the most part. And obviously there'll be some other things that come off, I'm sure that take us off track a little bit, but what I hope we get out of this meeting is, you know, we've look at the things we pass on these meetings, which are some major projects like the park and the village hall and the public works, which were all, you know, at least the village hall and the public works were nest necessities. And now we're gonna start looking at what dollars we have in maintenance and long-term funding, whether it's, you know, the next one, three, five, 10 years. So we're not being so reactive when something's starting to look bad, getting ahead of our parking lots and our roofs and the stuff we already own. Obviously, there's still going to be some projects that we may have on here for wish list items that we want to keep on our radar. But then we're going to see realistically what we will be able to do. And then also, we're gonna have to start looking at different funding mechanisms because there are other things that are available to us and things that have been taken from us, like the grocery tax and some things that we can add back in, like the grocery tax or certain sales tax. So I think we just have to have a group of philosophy on this and we're not gonna be voting on anything, but at least this will give us a guide to move forward to the next, you know, six months or year and gives staff some direction as well. So with that, I will open the meeting at twelve fifteen and stand for the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Trusty Martinez?
Here.
Trusty Pierce?
Present.
Trusty Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Kurt?
Present. Alright, again, thank you all for coming. I know it's not always easy to do this, you know, during business hours, but appreciated again for staff as well. Paul, do you have anything to say? It's public comment.
Well, during the last, let's know that the vaccine cure
Okay. Alright, so this is kind of the corny part of it that we were doing before, but I still think it's good to go around the room and, you know, when people are new, they're kind of saying something good that's happened either in their job or their personal life, you know, five, 10, 30 seconds of, you know, something that you, something that you, something you accomplished, you know, since the last quarter that you're proud of or something, you know, won an election or whatever it may be. So we'll just kind of go around them and go into sp- oh, of course, Amy. Alright. Howard, I'm starting with you, Amy's got a mouthful. So just, you know, just briefly less than a minute of what, you know, something you think is, but you've learned.
Yes, so I've been here for half a year. I've seen a lot of things. I'm involved in a lot of documents and plans and stuff being reviewed under the municipality. So one of the good things, I just came from the new Starbucks on 59th. The landscaping is there, so they're working on that. We're looking at the site, hopefully an opening soon. Three, four, six weeks is what I was told. Working on marketplace, you know, trying to untangle that ordinance mess and like different things. Also looking at, you know, car, car max, how they're coming in and how we're still deliberating and debating about different infrastructure stuff. A little bit of everything, big projects, also assisting building department. I don't have one building inspector anymore. Assisting them doing, you know, all planning and zoning reviews. And then it goes to HR green. Building review and building inspections. You know, coordinating with our move to the new village hall and stuff like that. Happy sphere.
Thank you.
Martinez. No, I mean, just, you know, one of the things I was joking around today was I went out talking to some businesses like I do on my days off and I enjoy giving their feedback. In return, I also remind them, I go, there's all, I go, I'm still learning my position. And so I go, I'll, you know, grace, you know, and give me graces as I learn and champion your causes as best I can. I go, I'm still trying to learn my role. But one of the things that come to mind is from the time I spent with Lori, where I received my packet and we talked about it, and I read through it, and one of the things that come to mind is there's a fifty line item where they talk about, you know, your position as a trustee. And one of the things was getting to know your sister municipalities. And by circumstance, I go, well, one of the one of the things about my job is at Metro is that my world becomes small. And if it so happens, there are some sister municipalities here in Lake County that I do know some leadership there. And so in return, I thought to myself, I'm like, that is, it was instinctual in me just because of who I am and what I do, but it is going to be a relationship that I look forward to bringing to us, right? And so
Thank you.
I think over the last month, I pulled about eighteen bags of weeds out of my two pieces of property. And not small bags, big bags and spread about thirty bags of mulch so far. And I probably have five hundred more bags of weeds to do. So, I don't know, the only other successful thing I've done in the last quarter is survive forty years with my wife, not killing me.
Thank you. You didn't hurt your, you didn't hurt your back doing it. So that's always good.
Retired a year now.
And you're still here.
And I'm busier now than I was. I don't even know how I found time to work. My grandkids keep me very busy. Yesterday, exciting news in our little house. It's a four, what was that house? Seven years old. And the bathtub looked like it was seven years old. And it's all redone. They came in and worked their magic and I had it all redone. So that was exciting in our house. That's just on a personal level. I did not attend the concert because I was away in Milwaukee at a wedding. But I'll tell you, all the feedback that I got yes, around this morning, actually. It was overwhelmingly positive. You know, they, they're so thrilled that we have that in their own town. Like they, they can't believe it. They don't have to drive somewhere and they're very excited. They had a wonderful time and
That's your job.
This is gonna be a fun afternoon.
That's it.
How wonderful it was and, and mom even though I wasn't there. And the feedback was overwhelmingly positive.
Thank you.
Personal wise, I don't know much to share other than complaints. So professional wise, there's many items that, you know, I'm proud of. I've worked for the village for twenty-six, twenty-seven years and all the projects that I did be involved with, especially the public works. For as long as I've worked here, it's been talked about. So complete the construction docs and go up the bid is very honored to be involved with it because not about municipalities or public works directors get the opportunity that we do.
So, Mike Howard, I've been here six months. So I finally feel like I'm settling in. I don't feel like I really missed deadlines, you know, different things have popped up that I think I'm barely making them. Looking totally forward to, I'm a new senior accountant. We've been down in person for, I think it's been at least nine months. And so Brandon and I have been, you know, trying to keep ourselves afloat, but we worked pretty hard. So looking forward to that. So I did get away to Florida with the grandkids, my daughters and grandkids down Florida for a week and we enjoyed that. Back to work. And it took me a week to, I thought I was doing pretty well, keeping up on emails. And I came back, there was a hundred and seventy-nine, which floored me. I was like, I swear I was keeping up on them. But it took me a week to get it back down to twenty-eight. So I'm at twenty-eight today and probably more than that by now. Don't send me one.
I know, that's what Jeff did. He goes, oh, now you have twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight, I had a hundred and sixty-three. So, like many others have said, that I've been here a short time, just under four months. I'm super proud of everything because it's been four months and I feel like I've been here ten years in a good way. And, let me think, I'm really, I was really excited at, for the concert. It was a very big team effort with public works and police and fire department, everybody being there and being so supportive was really, really helpful because I've never been, I've never even been to one of our big concerts because I don't really like crowds personally. So it was really great to see all the people that were out there. I also received only wonderful comments and feedback. So that was one of the proud moments personally. And related to that, I was very excited to have my husband and my children were able to walk over from the game that my son had at Williams and spend some time with us after their game and be part of the things that I get to do. It's a dream come true for a person in my field to be able to do the things for the community you live in and love and your family is there and growing up there and being part of it. So I was very thrilled to have my little boys, you know, backstage and like getting pictures with the band. And I'm like, this is part of the perks. It was very meaningful to me. So
Wondering where that Scott came from?
Cooper's like, I don't, I don't like Cooper, my seven-year-old was like, I don't like the smell of that fuss. And I was like, yeah, me neither. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jimmy.
With Howard's help, we did two very nice presentations, both for the plan commission zoning board of appeals and some people wishing to enact into the property or into the corporate limits of the village. So I'm really proud of that. I think they came out really well. Thanks, Howard, for your help with that. And real thrilling stuff. And, but no, I think we educated some people and I think that it should be interesting to learn some landings.
I'm thankful that we passed the election season first and foremost, but that's a fun time of year for everybody, both elected official staff and I would say that I'm proud of everybody that came on and all the people that have been here for a while and the new people and keeping the ship going in the same direction. Because that's never, you know, people are overseeing new people and learning new roles and new procedures and you know, everybody's been long hours trying to keep that, keep that moving forward. So I think, you know, we have a good team of people here. I'm proud that we got them, or moving on projects that we've been talking about for years, that, you know, whether it's the park, the public works, or the village hall. But those are things that we're going to get done. And then on a personal level, I am closing on a new house in a couple of weeks. So they'll be happy to hear I'm not going to be the park warden anymore. So I won't be living across from the park, watching everything that's going on. So I'll be moving over to Harrenharbor. No shirt, no shoes.
Making it through all of the transitions and, you know, we've been short-staffed upfront. We got new people coming in, learning new things and they've all just handled it with a smile on their face. And I'm very proud of, you know, how they represent the village to the community. Personally, on, on a personal level, I'm proud that I got Jackson to start reading her cutters. So
Lori stole a lot of my thunder as well. No, I should have said, I should have said where Howard was, I guess. So it's been cool to kind of rebuild a team of directors and other staff that is phenomenal. It was a lot of work. Lori, thank you for everything you've done. I think the fact that you were able to go throughout boarding for over twenty positions in the last year, year and a half speaks to your dedication. So I'm just proud of the organization and the team that we have. I think we're finally becoming a well-oiled machine and everything's kind of falling into place. Even folks that only been here for four, six months, I feel like everything's starting to mesh. We're having kind of a, a family environment where we can collaborate, have a little discussion. Keep it up. I'll keep it up. And we've been working through a lot of those things. Personally, I guess the biggest thing is my youngest child graduated high school. So that gets me one step closer to being able to retire. I've been counting years yet. And I'll yield the rest of my time to trustee Mason. Trusty Mason? No, come on.
Oh, okay. Well, twenty years ago.
You broke, you broke a hundred.
Twenty years ago, we had a mediocre police department. I think we got a fine-running men and women in the police department now, owned by Jeff. There, there's my
And what's your golf name again? Say, okay.
I golf against guys. They're pretty good. I'm sorry to keep up, but I'm still, I think I went to second place.
Just chugging along in the IT department, try, you know, handling the challenges that the village throws our way. And it's wonderful to be surrounded by supporting staff that understands that IT isn't just, isn't just one department, but it affects all departments. And on a personal level, I successfully, we survived seventh grade with twin boys. One being on the high honor roll and one being on the honor roll and both making it two sectionals for track and one going to state for track in the relay team placing second. So
Trusty Luther. Oh, yeah. I'll come back to Trusty Luther Rebecca. Welcome.
Thank you. I love walking the icebreaker. So fun. So I'm very proud to be serving on the board with all of you. I've been on my own practicing now for eleven years. And when I first went out on my own and did real estate closings and people asked where I live, I would say I'm from Antioch. And they would say, where is that? Is that in Wisconsin? Or I've never heard of it, but I'm very proud of the work that we've all done because I really feel like Antioch is on the map now. When I say that's where I live, people want to move to our community. It's become very desirable. They have nothing but good things to say. So I'm very proud of that. And then, of course, personally, anyone who knows me, I'm very proud of my son finally kind of like succeeding in life. He's twenty-six now and doing really well. Got promoted in the military and we finally feel like he is just thriving in life. So that's a good feeling as a parent. Oh, and I've become an expert pie maker this spring with my rufar. So I'm out of stock or I would have brought some for you all, but I didn't know I had that hidden talent. So
And one more thing, I'm happy to see Jake's back performing. He had a challenging year last year.
Yeah, I guess it's another, yeah, he's healthy and that's
Trusty Luther, do you hear me or is he muted or is he there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. I'm, I'm at work and I'm getting dragged away every couple of minutes. So I didn't get to hear everyone's updates. I really don't have a lot to update this time. So I'll just say, I'm glad to see we're moving forward on so many different projects and looking forward to seeing what we discussed today.
Alright, well, thank you. Well, if you couldn't tell by the look and design of this, Chad GPT was trying to take all our last meetings and help me come up with the agenda. So it's not going to be perfect. But I think he captures some of the items that we want to talk about today. And I said, we're going to talk about the big items, but I think it's time we all recognize that we've done some big items. Now we have to look at the less sexy projects of just maintaining what we have for the next couple of years and, you know, five, 10, 20 years. And in this packet, you'll see Dennis is part of the budgeting process. I put in here, the public works long-term capital plan, which I think we'll be looking through and deciding, you know, maybe prioritizing some things that we think are items that we should be doing now or things that we think can be pushed down the road. But it kind of gives us an idea, especially some of these big ticket items, even things that have to do with just infrastructure like, you know, sewers, lift stations, and things we're not always thinking about that cost a heck of a lot of money. And then you'll need a magnifying glass for this, but we also, I also printed the budget detail and the forecasting that finance put together, which is this document here. So we have it for reference. And Police Michael, you know, we keep looking for something, he'd help us find that number on his page if we're looking for some projections. So again, as you said earlier, you know, the village hall, I mean, out of this, I think we have to be proud of the things we did get done, which is a lot. The village hall project, we finally, after a lot of wrangling, have the feedback, the bitter site. So, you know, we've come to the point where we control that property, can move ahead with that project. And I think out of this, another thing that came out of these meetings was sitting here and saying, how are we going to do this public works? And then looking at the Grim Road numbers and seeing that Grim Road itself, just to get to the site, was going to cost us probably five million dollars. So we're able to make a decision to pivot in that regard. And, you know, other than a couple of people that showed up, we didn't really get too much pushback on the location so far. So that is, I guess, a win for the village and politically. The Ozley Grant, you know, we're here, we got that project going. So we talked about getting parts done here. We got, you know, one point two million dollar project that we're working on and I guess, you know, continue to work for these grants. The Seacoast Creek Park obviously is done and always evolving and learning new things. And then the public works, which is to me, not that anything else wasn't important, but the most necessary one that was on our radar for a long time and finally getting a proper public work facility for the employees and the village and our equipment that, you know, sits out there and has the less of a shelf life because we're not taking care of it like we should. And then again, I'll say again, also the events, like we're just doing, we've had some turnover in that and I know they're not always perfect and you know, we can continue to refine those and take suggestions from everybody and make those bigger and better and safer. And I know Jim Rand's on vacation this week, but with some of the turnover and I think it's acknowledged now with more assistant staff that that planning is going to start like now or by October versus, you know, the last couple of months and losing an event coordinator and all the stuff that happens in real time. But those are the things I think that we could really be proud of. And you know, some of the other items we're looking through, usually items are on our radar already. Some are new, some I've added for discussion to keep on our radar, but the Woods of Antioch ruins are obviously under progress in progress. And that kind of, it came out of one of these meetings. And I think Dennis and Joey Haley and Dennis and the rest of the board for finding a solution to pay for it and get it all done instead of phasing it over multiple years with that, rebuild Illinois money, Dennis, that are Centennial Park. I don't think design, science kind of complete, right? But it's still, we're, we're in the process where we're going to be making some decisions on the board level, even something like today that I'd like to see what we feel like sounds kind of simplistic, but do you want just pickleball courts? Do you want tennis courts and pickleball courts? Those are the types of things we're going to be picking out for this park. The New Haven fence path has been something that's been talked about for a while. I think it's something that we have to put on our radar to fix. The path there is really, really bad shape. It's been three years and the fence looks like a wavy fence that I think we should just be taking down at some point. So these are the things we should, again, with Dennis here talking and Michael talking about dollars. One of the things to know that Trusty Pierce is passionate about, I think is very important, is, you know, it may not happen overnight, but at least start looking into bike trail planning and people getting their ability to get to downtown. IDOT has come to us again with their, what would you call it? What was it?
That's a start of phase one.
Phase one meeting. For one seventy-three, for forty-one, all the way to four lanes, including a bike lane with dedicated bike lane with a rotating wall. So it's, you know, segregated. Realistically, that may start getting looked at to be funded in twenty twenty-nine. Is that what they're saying? But we are one of the top projects at this point. So it's, you know, in our future. But also these things, you know, the Route fifty-nine property, getting people from Harrenharbor, getting people from other parts of town to be able to ride their bikes, their golf carts. I think it's a very important thing. I know we've been waiting on the county to do some roads. Like I think there's been doing Deep Lake Road. I still don't know how people are going to turn from the east side of Deep Lake Road onto Depot Street without crossing traffic or getting killed by the roundabout. But that's above my pay grade. But I would like to start thinking about how we start making a plan or we start looking at consultants to kind of give us a potential trail map and make involved the forest preserve and, you know, the state and IDOT. But something I think that's important for the viability of the downtown. Something that and I, something that Michael Mara keeps asking me about was on our radar a couple of years ago was the Oakwood Knolls Culvert and the the road, the bridge there. Did you know of it? We kind of put it on the back burner. He keeps asking me about it. You know, I don't know how we pay for it. They suggested it SSA. I don't know how that goes over for the rest of the neighborhood unless they're maybe getting sidewalks too. But I think it's something we need to, you know, continue to talk about through today.
Can you put on that? The culvert does need done. Probably very bad in that section of it. But they're asking five hundred and fifty homes to pay for a lot of the homes.
Yeah. And that's something I was talking at a philosophical letter, like, you know, is everybody going to, unless they're all getting sidewalks, not all going to pay for so we gotta, we gotta talk about, we're going to have to find the money somehow to do it or figure out a way to get it funded.
I hate to say it this way, but the Woods of Antioch isn't getting an SSA put on the
I understand, I understand. Sales tax proposal, this is going to be a big one. As we know, we're going to have to make some philosophical decisions. I go to a mayor's lunch once a month with all the mayors from here, Lynn Hurst, Lake Villa, all the way down to Lake Zurich. And obviously, this is a hot topic and everybody's talking about it. Say, what are you doing? What are you doing? You know, are we all going to announce this around the same time? Everybody's doing something. We just have to figure out, you know, we budgeted it for one thing. I know Gurney just passed the sales tax, the one percent sales tax yesterday in lieu of the grocery tax. And we got to figure out if this is something we want to do, nothing. We want to do the sales tax one percent. The sales tax and the grocery tax, some hybrid of both. But I think we're going to have to figure this out within, you know, the next two months to
What did we lose when we made that grocery?
Eight hundred? Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand a year.
Yep. And I did, and I
January one of twenty-six.
And I, and I, you know, I did see Gurney raise their, their sales tax is now eight point five percent. Generally, our, our sales tax is seven percent, although we do the business district tax, the one percent tax, which gets up to eight percent. It's only on certain areas of the town and it does expire after twenty-three years. So we have to be conscious of that. So we have to figure out all these factors of how we're going to make sure we have the funding. I mean, my goal, I think all our goal should be, how do we take the burden of the taxes of the residents and their property tax bill and spread it out? So although I agree with trustees and staff that previous to Kim Beederman coming here, that this place or program wasn't being used, but now that she's putting together these reports, I'll show you some really important data of who's shopping from where in Antioch and where those dollars are coming from. I will tell you, I looked at retail and grocery and I was surprised to see that retail, when I say retail, Menards, Walmarts, Tractor Supply, those are all about twenty percent Antioch residents. And I was expecting the grocery stores to be like more like eighty percent. But those are also like twenty percent Antioch residents, which I was surprised. All the, I think, is the highest of twenty-six percent. But it kind of tells you where those outside dollars are coming from. And obviously, we could do anything to the, to the, for the residents for redo, helping them with the tax burden. We did have a meeting recently with Lee Perry, myself, Michael, Jeff was in there. And we had every taxing body in that room. It was very interesting to have this conversation, especially see if we can all come to some consensus of how we would limit our, everyone not raising five percent every year and showing what that tax bill's going to look like, you know, twenty. To live in Antioch right now, you have to make a minimum of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year basically to own a medium house, be able to pay the taxes. So residents are fifty-five and older or young families. I mean, we're, you know, I, it's okay if the town changes and, you know, prices go up, but we have to be realistic. I want people to afford. And I had the school district in there. I think everybody's kind of looking with the school, like, how can we work together? You know, we have these tip Work together, you know, we have these tip conversations coming up, the school will want to be involved. And so we're actively trying to figure out how we can. You know, stay afloat and keep doing good things and not, you know, us not go broke or not, you know, make all the residents leave the state of Illinois or. For Antioch in particular. Um, so we have, that's probably the biggest decision we're gonna be making here in the next sixty days. It's how we're gonna move forward in that regard because. The lifeblood of the village is depending on that decision uh and the planning. And then the downtown and marketplace projects, which um. Well, I've talked philosophically about what the downtown's gonna look like, what the housing situation's gonna look like, what type of density we're comfortable with, they're not comfortable with. What type of stuff we're gonna be targeting at the marketplace and what activity we have and what lack of activity we have. Uh, what the developers are looking for and what we're going to be comfortable basically giving them, you know, whether it's. They all want upfront money, we fill them to pay as you go. So they will, we'll kind of figure that out through the, through the process. I don't know why this came in this, this rocks, this street layer. I don't know if this is from last year or new stuff. Is the uh, is the uh, Dennis, this is all stuff, I think for you, for the. Maintenance stuff. Did already, uh, these future projects.
We currently do uh, monjacking. The storm waters annual. The street light was talked about as a project and then.
So I think this is a perfect segue before we get too focused on the big shiny items. To go to Dennis's list of more maintenance items and look at the things that we think need to be done. You know, certain parking lots, you know, the metro lot was on there, painting a water tower, I never did cost six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, there's things on there we have to prioritize that's, what are we gonna plan for now? And what are we gonna push down the road or what to be, you know, what to be doing to come here? So not put Dennis in the spot, but maybe I'll, you kind of walk through how you put this together and what the uh. What these numbers are.
Thank you. For sharing this. Um, I think it's very important. This is actually very typical for municipalities to lay out. Long-term capital plans of their infrastructure. So I started this, I think in like twenty-one, twenty-two. And submitted it to Michael when he asked what uh, what I had for capital. So. This is a working document. Uh, there's gonna be things that are going to fall off of this sheet because we sold it or. Uh, we moved it if it's a lift station and then there'll be items that uh, it entertains a, being put on this list. We're not locked to these years. These dollar amounts will change also. These years are basically me trying to figure out. What typically in a lifespan is for that piece of infrastructure. And then just plugging that in across the, the calendar of that years. Kind of forecasting what it's gonna look like. We've neglected to do a lot of these items. It's always kind of reactive. So it's so helpless to be more proactive and understand what we have in the next year or two that we should be replacing or. Painting or deciding on whether we're gonna get rid of it. It's. Part of a, a larger project, which you'll see in some of these, uh, that is the case. There's old village hall. We have a new village hall that's being remodeled. So that will fall off this list and create those ones. So I broke it down to uh, basically public works in general, and that's where items that didn't fit into. The next one is fleet, which was identifying all the public works fleets and the maintenance. Or the replacement of those pieces of equipment that we currently have. Then uh, there's the water system and the sewer systems that'll go through all our fire wells, our towers, our lift stations. Michael and I discussed the water main replacement plan. We're surprised that we don't have one, which. I, I would love to do it, but at a million dollars a mile. We don't have those funds and we have all these other items that need to be taken care of. The nice thing is, is the water and sewer fund is separate from the general. So. It's probably going towards water and sewer items. Next is uh, look at all of our facilities. And breaking those down by items that I felt we should be looking at, uh, which is ropes, siding. Interior. Any type of uh, special amenity within that facility or exterior wise. Again, this is a working document. So there, you may think of something that is not on this list. Streeting this one also, which is a pretty simple layout. Mainly geared around the streets and my road programs a big part of that. It's pretty large. There's a part one two, it's a pretty large document. This, this fiscal year's capital plan. From this document, so there are items within the budget. I don't know that we're gonna be able to accomplish all of them. There's a lot of contract driving, a lot of bidding for some of these items. I'm glad the mayor wanted to share because I think it's very important. We don't see a lot of these items and they're kind of easy to get ignored.
There's somewhere still about twenty-four. Are those done? Are those the ones that were on that?
Some of them had to be pushed. I think the skater was pushed. For the water and sewer system, most of the twenty-fours were taken care of. With the exception of.
Did the screen replace it?
Uh, we're hoping to do that this year. We're gonna be working with uh, that uh. Trotter and Associates is the engineering firm. Couple different options that uh, we have instead of a full. It's fine screening uh, at the headwork, headworks building of the wastewater drain line. So all of. But uh, the current, the current fine screen. Supposed to be capturing about sixty-five percent to seventy-five percent of the material, which then gets put into a dumpster. Um, and it's captured maybe about thirty, thirty-five percent, which then causes numerous chain reactions downstream within our plant. Pumps and. Riffle systems and our clarifiers that get clogged up and require maintenance. So we're hoping the return on investment is less maintenance to certain pumps before their lifespan because of their clogging. The, the amount of time it takes staff to draw down the tank, to be able to pull that pump or, or clean the uh, the battle system. Clarifier arms, there's a return on that and hopefully it won't be that. That we originally had estimated for the uh, fine screens, worth more geared towards alternative one that we have with a reduced expense. Engineers. Currently, I think that we'll be able to get closer to that capture number.
So I would suggest that, oh. Without making this too long in the process, I suggest that we literally go through every page of this. I think a lot of the equipment stuff, we're just gonna be like, we trust Janet. Dennis's judgment because I don't know if they need a lawnmower or a new dump truck or at least a new car, it's gonna come up, but I think. These bigger projects, I think we should go through them and look at them and say, hey, you know, ask the questions about it, prioritize them. And then if you have other projects that come to mind, write them down at the end and say like, hey, well, what about this? What about this? So we can get through these. And see if there's anything we missed, um, that, you know, we think should be on the radar that aren't. And then um, kind of figure out a plan like, okay, well, that's gonna happen, you know, this year or that can wait two years or we need that one in the next ten years. So.
Yeah, and there's also, you know, as, as we apply for grants, like. Mentioned that I dot put out a four hundred million dollar uh, grant opportunity, which we, we did apply and uh, there was two projects that we applied for. One was a downtown streetscape for, I think, two and a half million dollars. Hopefully we'll know soon whether, you know, that grant is promising for Antioch or I dot, you know, said it didn't meet their checks and balances. But that may help in the capital plan because there's street banging, there's sidewalks. You know, there's a couple of other projects that are similar that changed some of these items. That's what I say. It's kind of a working document.
And that's why I think it's good to, like I said, twice a year to be looking at this and looking where our, what our bank account looks like.
I almost continually look at this annually unless I know something needs to be changed because it's constantly gonna be updated. Whether it's new equipment we get or new buildings or the parks get changed, you know, Centennial's getting, that's another one. Centennial's in here. Well, that's getting. You know, a full redo. So now that's gonna change in this capital plan from all the maintenance items to. Basically being deferred outside this. Timeframe because it's all gonna be new ultimately. Uh, so. Yeah, so I try and, I try and review it almost every year just to update. Prices need to be updated.
Just, just one, one, one suggestion. There's items in here like the Route fifty-nine bike test is six hundred thousand above grant. Isn't that often in the future somewhere?
It is.
So, so, so what I'm just saying is, if there's a grant listed that people are thinking, oh, we're getting a grant for that, I think it needs to be annotated here that. It's missing in action somewhere. So it's named as press lane, you know?
You can call, yeah. I tried to chase that one down about fifty different ways.
So I'm, I'm just saying, something to use, there's, there's a grant, the grant's like smoking the wind.
Yeah, no, and, and I would have removed especially the Route fifty-nine because of that grant, but. I need to add it, um, which I haven't. I think back in this, but I felt it was important to keep it on. As you put it on here. So a, a symbol added on, of the spreadsheet.
I think philosophically, we all learned from the last four years of doing this that like. We're doing these planning, unless the money's in our bank account, let's talk, let's not talk about projects with grants unless we have the uh. You know, approval or we know the money's coming because we're doing a lot of the planning with the assumption we have these funds until they learn that. You know, maybe you got approved at the state level, but it never got funded. So yeah, it's important to note on this. Um, so on the first page, obviously the public works, you know, top street parking lot that's on there, Dennis. For the board's knowledge and Howard knows this as well and staff, you know, there is a development group looking at our village hall building. And we've been to talks with them about, you know, as part of this, they would need more parking, like a public-private partnership to redo that parking lot that looks so bad or. Set it up that it could eventually become a, a small parking garage. I always feel like that would be the best place in our downtown for a small parking garage. So what do we want to do on that project at this point? Since I'm here for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, I don't know if it was in the budget for this year, but it's on the project. Accurate? I don't think we, I don't think we budgeted for it, just on this list. So we either have to kick it or figure out what we do with this or, you know, it's. I hate going around telling people their parking lots look bad and then I look at some of ours. So it's a little bit, uh, you know, stay in my lane.
So it's in twenty twenty-seven performance, seven thousand.
Twenty twenty-seven, okay. So I think by then we should know where it's going developer and you know, that still may be our share of a cost if it becomes something bigger like a. A, some, you know, sort of a structure, but.
Right, so the idea is for like a four-story building to take place where the current city village hall is. And they're only gonna provide for eleven hot street parking. So the developer said, hey, we're gonna have to use some of the public parking space. And I said, that's a good idea. For example, when I was at Blue Island, it, the municipality was able to negotiate. On a parking lot that the, used to be the Masonic Temple, that had became a Cook County Health Care Center. They needed parking for patients there, right? On Western Avenue. So this city made an agreement that. You can use the parking lot, you'll pay us a monthly fee for parking, but you'll also redo the parking, repave it, new striping, new lighting, new landscaping. So maybe this could be an idea for top street besides the idea of building a parking garage there. Now, I've also provided, you know, I call it information that when I was in Park Bridge. I recall there was the Advocate Medical Center. They had like a three-story parking garage that brought from their main building. They came to Park Bridge and said, we're gonna add another two la- layers, but it was originally built for more, you know, structure, you know. You know, handling more weight. So during that review process is part of the master plan for the hospital. They spend one summer, you know, putting one layer or another layer. So if today you go there and you look at it, the three first layers are brick. And then the two are different materials, outlay of it shows you that's the new versus the old. So this is my idea, you know, planning, zoning, long-term. There have a shortage of parking. We have plenty of parking spaces. We should be very intelligent. Not giving it away and negotiating a public-private partnership for an existing parking lot or for ideas of building a parking lot. At least one level, but build it where more levels could be added there on the road. So that's my idea on the top parking lot. Now, the same developers are also looking at the uh, how you call it, the anti-od shopping center. They're looking to maybe purchase the whole property, raise it and build uh, housing. So there, they're also looking at, you know, we're gonna need additional parking. So these are ideas. They've come to us, they presented these ideas to us. So it looks favorable. They keep contacting me for like. You know, what's your downtown uh, guidelines for, you know, the facade treatment? What's your site plan review criteria of parking? So they are engaging.
And we will go probably more in this meeting into some of that stuff with what's the downtown gonna look like? If things, you know, change or develop or what's the density we want? I will tell you that the group that contacted us, I knew through a broker. And uh, they did bring in their other plans and I, we asked for what other projects they do and Howard's a very, you know. We want the historical look and, you know, keep it consistent.
Right, a historical look for the building, right? On, how you call it, on the Orchard Street, right? They can have a different look, but on Main Street, they should kind of mimic the older Victorian look of.
And guessing footprint would probably be similar to what Casa Bonita is in like uh, Libertyville that like. It'll be retail on the first floor and like two stories or whatever of.
So they're looking like maybe a restaurant and three stories of residential. So i- it, density is gonna be higher. This is a question that we have to ask the board. How do you feel about density, especially in the downtown? We're not building a fifteen-story high-rise, but four.
Yeah, and um, there are projects, we get this to them, if this keeps moving forward, they're in like Glen Allen, Oak Park. Winnetka, like nice, nice uh suburbs. So, you know, they, they do quality products. They don't sell them. They keep them, right?
Right, market rate.
The problem is, they're closer to the city than we are. So people are, will live there, jump on a train and go. We're so far out, we're, we're at the border. We're border town. I can't see someone. Who, a young couple wanting to. Live downtown Antioch when they can go live in Winnetka or they can go live in Rushbrook and jump on a train and be in downtown. And now, now if where Ed's office is sitting, that was Lake Marie, it would be a completely different story. But we're not on the lakes. What's the draw? There is no draw, other than how cute Antioch is this little town.
Side, it'd be very dark. Big buildings on one, small buildings on the other side. So you'd have darkness. That side of the street.
And I would say that other, like literally the focus could be the long-term planning I have to do, but we're gonna have to make a. Well, the last thing I want is that village hall, those three buildings sit on Main Street empty for a significant amount of time. And, and that's someone who gets to focus on like that building, if that makes sense. Um, like I said. As far as business goes, like I don't want to be. Some of the towns where I grew up or anything that's crazy, but I have like, recently I went to Palatine or something. I couldn't believe what was going on there because. The restaurant, the, everything was like so active right there because there were like, you know, people lived down there. So I don't know. I mean, I guess. Covid changed the world and a lot of things changed the world of the cities and people not wanting, you know, wanting. COVID changed the world and a lot of things changed the world of the cities and people not wanting, you know, wanting have a, the same opportunities in cities, walking into restaurants and stuff in suburbs as they have downtown. But that's what we often decide when these guys are going to come in, Howard.
So, so what I hear a lot is I do speak to people. The reason why people are buying these new homes and all these new subdivisions because they're cheaper than Monterey Line or Liberty. They're willing to come up here to live here. We have an event, we have a train station. Is it promoted by Metro? No. But if we have the density, then we can start pushing for more, like Libertyville has done it in the seventies and eighties. Where today you have a lot of people going downtown and working there. When my wife and I first moved here in two thousand and fifteen, we looked at apartments in Libertyville. They were more expensive than downtown Chicago. My wife was like, I don't get it. This is just a suburban community. So if, if, if you build it and it's treated nicely, you could get those market rates and you could get people living here. The density is going to help for other businesses, the co, you know, the synergy, the health club, the cafe, the restaurants. But without that, if we're just going to have like single-story building, commercial, the two stories of small apartments, you're not going to try and get, you know, to develop eventually to the metros, metro area.
So I, I guess, because we're not going to get that, so just to say a check of it, because we're going to get back to the development stuff. But it sounds like top street thing, we already have a plan to keep that, move that to twenty twenty-seven, keep our radar, see how this plays out with the developer. If they do come in, if we work out some agreements. Um, I see the next one is the village hall parking lot. Is that the new village hall? So this is again, it's a, a ban shell, parking lot asphalt, is that? Um, that's a, you know, down the road. Does that include our common areas over there for the village as well, Dennis?
It's all.
All of it. I mean, that one is one we might, when we're moving over there, instead of trying to move up because, you know, obviously that's going to be our downtown main campus and, you know, it should probably look nice. The bad thing is, we did such a good job with, you know, Main Street and the park. Now you go back there, we have new village hall, and you look at like that parking lot in the back of those buildings, which again, I would support that we work with Howard to figure out how they could fix the back of those buildings on a facade grant. You know, that's going to be our main area. So I think that's one that, you know, we may want to look at moving that up a bit. And that also talks our plan, like, what do we want to do with the ban shell, the Bill Brooks area? Do we want to move skidboard? Do we want to make it more of a grassy campus? Like, what do we want to do back there? And that's something we want to decide. But I can see that one moving up way sooner than twenty twenty-four. Um, seniors, seniors are nothing. PD was just done. Metro, that's another one.
Right.
The Metro parking lot's in bad shape. It's a big number. Um, I mean, I think it's obviously at this point underutilized just because of the amount of trains that are running out of there, um, except when there's big events. And I think the businesses own, what, the first row or the first two rows and you own everything else.
First row.
Would there be any?
It's all RTA, the parking.
Would there be any advantage for us or RTA or somebody to sell or give half part of that parking lot to the businesses? I mean, they probably won't want it, but.
I believe, I believe we have a contract with Metro for it.
Okay.
The building in the parking lot is owned by the village in Antioch. It's, we are the ones that collect the, money that we collect is put in a separate account. Those funds would be used for the maintenance of that. Uh, I forgot about it, but it's pretty simple.
What year do you have it in the budget or is it out of there or anything right now?
For the.
For the Metro.
I added for, for, uh, just going to your twenty-six this year.
Yes, that's one of those, one of those general fund neutral.
Okay. Because Lake County shows is owned by RTA. No, it's, it's, it's owned by the village. The, the building and the parking lot's owned by us. And we have, we formed, we have an agreement where they basically said, we'll put the train service in here and we're going to stick you with everything else and the costs and expenses in. And we happily said, oh, yeah, sure.
How, how, how bad is the lot? Bad? You're there every day.
Uh, you know, I, I think of other communities like Grey's Lake where they cut off half the lot. So it's not accessible. They put up the, the portable gates and they keep people out of it knowing very well that it's not worth the maintenance. Um, so that's something I should consider doing, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's probably, you're talking maybe, maybe thirty cars parked there a day.
It, it, it really, lots, got a few divots here and there, but it's not, not terrible, terrible.
I mean, it needs to be restripped for sure, right? I mean, if they do like, this is a full repaving, like, uh, you know, whatever. Seal coating, seal coating and get the stripes in there. Because I feel like that's another spot that in the next five or ten years, that somebody might come in and say, hey, I want to put new retail in here or something. I don't know.
It's a heavily used lot for all of our events, all of the events, right? It's packed.
Yeah. So, so I have an idea.
Sure.
So when we do have these events, do we have like a suggested donation for parking?
I did see a lot of people paying for parking last Thursday.
Were they?
They added hours.
So why not?
I just kind of left it alone.
It's not mandatory. It's like, you know, but if you want to make a donation cash, drop it in the box when you go park a public parking area.
Metro might. Charge for parking.
We had to check. Okay.
Well, I don't know if it, I don't know if it's specified.
I mean, could we, could we, if we have, say we have a big event like we just had, okay, and I don't want to make it too complicated, but could we have somebody there charging five bucks for like, hey, event parking, five bucks, five bucks, five bucks? I mean, that all adds up.
Haven't intended, haven't.
Have somebody there with the door and say, hey, five bucks to park here, you know, or whatever. We get, we're our lots. We might as well monetize it a little bit. We're not charging anything for the concert and.
Say it's a donation, you know, suggested donation. This is going towards the parking lot maintenance. It's not going to pay other things.
Yeah. Thought, so Dennis, maybe look at what, you know, alternatives we can, that, I hate to word, put lipstick on a pig, but that's kind of like, we're talking about, I think, you know, making it serviceable for, you know, another couple of years.
Yeah, no, definitely. I mean, it, these, these are like recommendations. It's not set in stone. And I expect that things are going to be shifted. Because sometimes we may run into something that may run thirty-five years of, you know, service life to us and wind up dealing privately with my, so.
No, this is good information. So, so many years ago, I was in New York City and I was in a forum. I had a, I call it, in downtown Manhattan, right, where they had different professionals, mayors from different cities about issues about infrastructure. So this person, this mayor from a Colombian village, a city. So you know what I started doing? I started putting in the down underneath of the water fill. If anyone's interested in making donation, contribute. And he was surprised how many people did contribute to donation. So, you know, these are things that people are talking about all over.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bad idea. I, I have heard other towns, I think, you know, hey, donate towards, like I said, I was talking to Tom Johnson yesterday, I said, why are we paying for the fireworks? Like, that could be a sponsored thing or that could be community donation thing. It's like, why? Why are we, why are we paying forty thousand dollars for fireworks? Like, it could be the fireworks presented by so-and-so or community donations or, yeah, things like.
Have a sponsor on it.
And again, that public private money.
Have someone sponsor a paper.
And, you know, those things are all getting higher, but, um, yeah, they're all good ideas. And again, um, our water bill's going to have like ten things. Here's a link to this, here's a link to this. But, um, yeah, it's not a bad idea. Um, sidewalks, we have some grants in. Um, I heard Dennis say about the one, I talked to Brad Schneider. I had lunch with him and his assistant a month and a half ago. They did put our grant through to the further phase this time. I hope some of this stuff gets funded this year. Uh, it's been two years with nothing. Um, I think six hundred fifty thousand dollars or so to do Main Street and make it ADA accessible and clean up the sidewalk area down there. So that would be nice. And then you said on top of that, Dennis, there's another one in.
Sure. Well, we submitted for our downtown streetscape.
What, what would that entail?
So that would entail a full review of ADA compliance, um, specifically at Lake Street and Main. The southwest corner by Doll Building to, uh, incorporate a, a ramp there. Um, new streetlights, all new, uh, sidewalk, basically, getting rid of the brick near the curb line. Uh, the mid-crosswalk pedestrian improvements there with, uh, like a flashy beacon and more ADA uh, compliance met by IDOT standards. Uh, I believe trees were in there. It was basically taking all of the downtown and wiping it out and putting it.
Let me say, why we have the, not the trees, I'm doing those like, but like a rolling fan, all of them?
Yeah. It would be a streetscape, which technically would, they would basically take whatever's within the limits and redo everything.
They take the trees?
Yeah, they would take trees down, buy new trees.
I don't want to hear the fallout.
Um, but that can be adjusted.
Yeah. So, you know, these are the things that I think we have, those are some that are on here, but hopefully we get, uh, other sources of funds for those. I think we have those grants pending. Um, and now that I'm moving to Harren Harbor, I'll move this one up to the number one, uh, the Route sixty-nine bike that, um, you know, I think this is something that we look at incorporating with that property we bought at Route fifty-nine. If that's our next Oslid grant we go for, um, you know, I think we got to talk to, uh, Tom yesterday was really concerned. He comes to these lunches about us cannibalizing each other on like asking for grants at the same time. So I think we have to strategically be like, okay, you know, we're putting in this year for this one, not competing against each other because it like knocks us both out. But, um, I want to really focus, um, at some point, the capital for big projects. I really think that property that we bought from the Peterson family and the whole campus area that is the work property, that's work property is going to be important for us in the future. Um, what's bike path asphalt? Is that just their maintenance?
Yes.
And that, does that include anything with, uh, that doesn't include the New Haven, right?
Bike path depot and then through.
It'd be from. What about bike path long depot would be incorporated into it while we do a road.
And is this bike path expansion kind of what we were talking about earlier, like a long-term plan? And I don't know who do that. Is that somebody like a Hitchcock or, uh, I mean, sure there's companies that do this. And I'm sure that, I would assume the Forest Reserve, IDOT.
It has, it has to be everybody because by my estimate, the way you make it work, it's like a regional bike path that covers, covers Antioch, the chain of lakes, uh, to the two ninety-four. So it's got to be regional.
Who is the, who's the Lake County, uh, I think that is the, uh, Lake County rep from Beach Park here? Is she the head of the Forest Reserve now? I don't know. She is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, you need the Lake County, you need Lake, the Forest Reserve, and the state, and the federal government all involved. Because you're going to need to do things like put an underpass at, on, at one seventy-three fifty-nine.
Well, there's, um, I also, Jimmy, I don't know, so let's start putting on her radar. What's her name?
Gina Roberts.
Gina Roberts, starting getting on Gina's radar. Um, I will say this doesn't, as we're talking about amexing some of that area, maybe overdone by Echrow Road. Um, I have been told by Kevin and Linda that that Forester is finally on their radar to do something down there, which it's unincorporated, but it's close enough. So they are hopefully putting the trails and the beaches and little launches for canoes and stuff over there in the next two years or so. So we'll see if that comes to be something.
Is there, is there a trail that comes out of the backside of Harren Harbor over the corner?
The stub, it's, that's right.
Yes, it's stubbed by Antioch pizza pit.
No, over by, uh, in the back of, uh, what's this, Red Hawk or Red, yeah, Red.
Yeah, that's, uh, Harren Harbor's crack island.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. Now you call it that, right? I know which one it is.
I know, yeah, but, um, yeah, so that there is a path. And I know people with golf carts have found a way to get from there to the sandbar and other places back there, but eventually there should be a real trail or something. So.
Yeah, and so it's a regional effort by everybody. And I, I'm thinking fifteen, twenty million dollars total. But we should be able to at least present our plans to people and say, this is what we're looking at for us.
Or at least identify the areas, like, you know, ideally anybody out on one seventy-three, New Haven, Red Wing, Clublands. I mean, they get almost to, um, what's the, what's the subdivision there where, uh, Scott Halliwell's, uh, Eagle, Eagle, yeah, you get to that point, but then you can't get to like deep, uh, deep lake if that's where you're going to put the bike lane. Those people will need to be able to get on their bikes and stuff to the bike lane to get downtown, save people south of town. I mean, north, you're kind of going down side streets, but, you know, we have to help them identify, like, these are the people that are, can't get there, you know? When I was, when my kids, I wish I could be like, hey, ride your bike to the pool, you know, when they're younger, but, um, that's not a possibility.
And it's kind of convoluted for New Haven and Red Wing. You gotta go down Savage Road and catch that one that goes over the park. But then you're stuck at one seventy-three.
Yeah. And I think, uh, when, when Congressman was here, I think he's always meeting with, uh, the Farmer Doolittle family. I think they're finally willing to like, let them maybe eventually connect that, uh, path that separates the two, um, over there by Clublands.
So, so the mayor was present at our meeting with Marketplace. I was asking for Eastman's to access to the lake behind it.
Yeah.
When they said, oh, you have Brown Avenue. I'm like, we don't own Brown Avenue. It's a private street.
Uh.
But I am pushing for that in these, these subdivisions.
Yeah.
And these projects.
No, it's, it's important. So, um.
Little connectors here and there is going to help.
All right. So that's, that's first page. Uh, I don't think we're going to need to talk about dump trucks or truck forty-seven. This is, okay, so we're going to look at the stuff that's like, the stuff that's realistic. But I was, I mean, I think about this all the time. And I'm talking twenty to a hundred years from now. The three things I think are the most important for Antioch's, uh, ability to grow or thrive is A, one seventy-three has to be four lanes, which hopefully will happen. B, I don't know what they can do, everyone says it can't happen, but there's got to be a way for, uh, somebody smarter than us to figure out the edge. There needs to be a great separation somewhere in Antioch, like, you know, obviously one seventy-three is narrow, but there needs to be like something like they have around Lake where, you know, people get through town and the freight trains aren't cutting it half all the time. I know it's a pipe dream, but continue to push that, uh, forward. And then, you know, I know it was talked about and I will hear nor there why it didn't happen, but I still think that you have to keep Lake Michigan water on the radar and how that ever get paid or funded. I mean, that's a hundred, I mean, we have good wells and deep wells, but a hundred years from now, I'll be like, hey, Antioch no longer has population because there's no water here. I just want to make sure allocation is a no way. And I don't know how it ever happened. I have no solution for that, but I still think it's important for the town.
I think our biggest concern is population growth with the fact that Forest Reserve blocks us there, they could.
Yeah. And I don't know where we'd get it from now because I think most of the other, the one that Lakeville and Linder is on is pretty much allocated, right? That's tapped out.
No, I think, I think, uh, that's, uh, CLC.
Yeah, Jawa.
They, we would, they're not going to approach us. And we would approach them.
Yeah. And at some point, I think we just got to keep putting on their radar with, like, this bike family, like, hello, hey, no, we're still thinking about this, but I don't know how the heck we would ever pay for this. It's, uh.
When, when, when's our allocation, Dennis?
We're renewed it.
Was it? That's like ten minutes.
Um, lead service, well, tell, explain that for the board, see how it works.
Sure. Um, the lead service line elimination plan that, uh, State Illinois is basically hand made that, uh, all water systems take an inventory, identify how many lead service lines they have that serve their residents. Document that and submit a plan that, uh, shows us, I believe, replacing fifteen percent of our total uh, each year. So we've done all that. So I was just basically putting that into a construction project of spending X, Y, Z per year in designated areas to eliminate the lead service line. Uh, the village is responsible for the portion from water main to the B box. The resident is, uh, responsible for their portion from the B box to the home or within home. Some communities, low cost, do the entire line with village funds or if they're lucky enough to get IUPA funds, grants, uh, so forth. I've set it up to where we're taking care of our responsibility. Seeing if the homeowner would want to do their portion with possibly the contractor that we would contract with. That's kind of my plan. I don't, maybe trustees or the mayor.
Do you identify which have, which properties are, are privately owned residence versus mental properties?
Uh, we, we just look solely at the, the utility, utility line, that service line. And then we have it and then we have to replace it for the portion of it, whether it's rental or single-family, uh.
And you're talking if we wouldn't, if we would take it, there's a possibility if we got like grants and all that stuff, take it all the way into the, the building. But then we're about the rest of the building because the sled going in, it's probably letting the building.
Correct. It has to go to the water. Correct, it has to go to the water.
I was talking to somebody a couple weeks ago, Dennis, I don't know if they knew any more about this than I did, but they made mention on the, from the B box to the house, like somebody can't afford it because it's a monetary issue, right? There's a waiver they have to sign, but then there was mentioned that there's a requirement within the legislation that the village has to offer some sort of funding, whether it's payments.
I haven't seen that. I've, I've seen the waiver, but I wouldn't be surprised if the I E P A starts amending.
Trying to push like say the low income people, if the village has to whatever, let them pay it on the water bill for the next ten years or something.
And I'm sure it's gonna become part of a home sale too. I'm sure it's gonna be like a lead based payment, you know? These items that either have to be taken care of or.
Because the feds are accelerating the timeline a little bit too, right?
I have been writing too much on the federal level just because then the I E P A. Yeah, usually the feds are a little less strict. But this, the State Illinois basically is the one that initiated it to get ahead of, you can see other cities that were dealing with it. The illnesses possibly and so forth, so.
I guess, you know, you have to legis, even if the law does require the villagers to do it, I guess that's a policy decision of the board at some point, whether or not we want to offer some sort of financial assistance or low interest loan payable by water bill for people that can't afford to replace the lead service from the box to. And who's expecting, you have an estimate, it's expensive, right?
It's, well, it's gonna depend on the location. Like, we have lead services downtown. So that's gonna require the road to be tore up, the sidewalk, the curb, or you take into consideration a home on in Oakwood, not that there's any lead services there, but you have no curb. If the water mains outside the road, you don't have any roadway impact, so the cost is less. We estimated anywhere between eight and fifteen thousand dollars per service. No, we basically gave an estimate for the entire, the entire service. We have just over two hundred, as I thought you'd say that, because you went two hundred. Just over two hundred.
Oh, really?
Ignoring your mail, notices from the village again, are we? A lot of them are downtown too, right? The buildings downtown have a lot of lead service.
Yeah, I, I forget how many, because that was part of the grant that we submitted for IDOT was incorporating replacing those lead services before we did all the work.
Pick it up, break it up, replace it, then break it up.
Yeah, there was like a total of sixteen downtown between Maine and Park. You wanna do grim next, Dennis? We could keep it on there. And then if anything was to develop. Probably just move that out or remove it from the calendar years.
Was it in the bike, your financial forecast numbers?
Yeah, is that, that's kind of.
Yeah, I'll remove it off the ten years. I'll keep it on there. It's just a placeholder.
If this is something that ever came back on our radar, is this with H R Green, does it might really get some grant money?
Well, we, we still have an application in the council mayors for.
Okay. Off topic, but what do you wanna do with that property? I mean, we're sitting on this property, the tip that's generating nothing.
Which property?
The whole oiling property. Should we be hard like marketing this and liquidating that property?
Tried marketing it, it's just sat there.
I don't know if we've really tried.
We've got a billboard up somewhere. We gotta sign?
I mean, I don't think it's been marketed that hard. I think Michael called somebody to do it. I mean, I wouldn't sort of buy for a million bucks or whatever, a hundred bucks. And it's obviously like, I mean, I guess it has a little money from tractor supply, but you know, I don't, we, I don't know if our water gonna handle it.
Can't stuck it to us when they backed down on everything that was planned for over there.
Yeah, well, that might be changed. Yeah, I think they've been talking to developers about moving too, so I don't know what's gonna happen to that property. I mean, when we go to these ICSC events and other events, I'm actually talking to, I've been talking, I talked to hotels or other places like, hey, we'll give you this lot if you build a hotel here. I mean, that's about all we're seeing for interest right now. I know at one point the public works was the idea, but I think we didn't make the decision today, but keep on your radar if you think, you know, hey, there's a property that we should probably start really marketing and liquidating and at least get it to somebody that's gonna pay all of it.
We're not moving on it. If we make, we make money on it and we, we satisfy whatever we need to satisfy with the tip that's set up there. Once you sell the rest of the property, that kind of impacts the whole fifth and the people are got money from the fifth already.
Without Village Hall, I don't know if there was an actual on the, I'm sure there was with the, what do you call, conference of plans. Like if there's a, a concept for it, maybe we start thinking about, hey, these are different concepts that we think might work here, so.
The problem said, we'll get developers, but they're all gonna, you know, have their hands out.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we don't have a developer that says, oh, I'm gonna develop, I wanna do it all by myself. I'm not gonna get that. So even if we bring people, they're gonna ask for, you know, money from the tip. Can we waive the building fees? Can we make this process easier?
There you go. There you go. Dennis, I, I know there's nothing on here, new well. Are we gonna need a new well like over by Oakwood Golems or the Public Works Building? Is that something we need to put on our radar someday? I mean, because we're buying that property, you think either a park or a new well like next to the Village Hall might make the most sense? If we have no way to get Lake Michigan water in the near future, but is that something that we should be thinking about?
No, definitely. And really that develops from well five than the iron levels that we have in there, which aren't super high, but it's just past the threshold of the state. Which is on emergency backup, we can't utilize it if we need to. So part of when that happened, we were trying to evaluate the water system. There's a lot of front-end work that goes into where a well is gonna be placed, because you can't just put it anywhere. There's drilling that needs to occur to identify if there's aquifer there, how deep it is, what the water is that we're pulling out of the ground task, ideally up near Nelson and North Avenue. That has been a location that's been kind of talked about for ten years now. There was a housing development, development that was gonna go up there. We were gonna put it out there, which would then also help windmill the harbors, Oakwood Golems. Gary's Longview, because they are lower water pressure than in town. So, yeah, it's on here.
They would put it as like a five or ten-year item just to keep it like something on there?
It's, it's gonna be phases. I think the initial phase is, is doing that research to identify is North Avenue, P W is proposed, is that a good location for a well? It may not be, maybe, you know, next to Centennial or maybe down near Tiffany Road and, and North Avenue. So, and some of the, some of the research they could do is there's actually geology maps showing some of our aquifers. So they found state, they did it years ago, it's where they identified these aquifers. And of course, they probably have changed, which I think we've talked about a little bit. It'd be interesting to see how much they've changed locally because Lakeville is not pulling out of it. Linderhurst isn't pulling out of the aquifers.
The aquifers just not pulling out of it anymore.
So what do the aquifers that we would pull out of look, look like right now? But that would be the initial phases, getting the study done to understand what's the best location for our next well.
Alright, well, let's put that as a five or ten-year, right? This is where I completely don't know what it costs to paint the tower. Again, public-private partnerships, Raven Key Tower or whatever you wanna call it, but you just six hundred thousand dollars pop. And it looks like you have one, do we kick that one or is that in the budget?
No, I'm in the process. It's in the budget.
And then I don't think it's financial assistance with the school, right? It's just a.
Yeah, we had an agreement with Antioch Boosters to maintain the logo for the sequoia's on that tower. With not really a cost, they paid for it originally. We would maintain it unless it costs more than what our logo costs. I mean, typically we do on all of our water towers, unless there's something we'd like to change, but. And the reason why, you'll see some of them are different, our towers are different sizes, different elevation. So there's gonna be costs that some are half the cost. Raymond's a large tower, IDI's a large tower.
I know I asked Dennis once before, are we generating any revenue from our towers?
The one in Harren Harbor has cell, cell revenue.
Yeah, Anita, the Anita Tower, which is on Anita by kind of northwest of Centennial. Harren Harbor's Tower, IDI's Tower, and that's it. We don't have anything on Raymond. We did years ago and it was removed by the telecom company.
In a, in a position like this, do we ask the companies, do we go around and ask for companies to come in and see if this is something that they would be interested in or do they come up to us?
My experiences, they've always came to us. They'll usually contact myself or the administrator to.
I mean, they always need to hide this point.
That serves to geographic area. The latest one we did was in Harren Harbor. It was a couple of years ago.
I mean, that, the one that we have here, pencil grave, is Raymond Tower. That's.
All depends on the cell service. Were there ends that were, they wanted to start? Or if that was a, that's a Verizon tower in Harren Harbor, they have no Verizon service. So that's why they approached Antioch. I'm seeing those days of disappearing between five G and then satellite.
With like the Starlink stuff?
Because they're trying to push it onto mobile customers to start hooking out to it.
Okay.
That's only protection.
Alright, anything else? This rest of the stuff is like, they're kind of boring, so we're gonna skip past the rest of this page, which is just maintenance items. And then maybe take a five-minute break and then jump back into some, some more, take a good water, back and break it and keep going. Alright, let's take a five-minute recess and then we have a few games, food, some refills. So, Brad, we're back. Now we're back on to, it looks like some more water items. Some are, these are more current items. That looks like, I guess for these, you know, obviously rely on Dennis and his expertise for a lot of this stuff, although I guess the Grim Roads, who are this station is probably a non-issue right now, right? Dennis, that for, that's something you do no matter what.
Correct, but we were, Raymond Lift Station, if Antioch Marketplace continues with their development, we're gonna have to look at, and I call it the Raymond Lift Station.
This is the one with thirty-three point five million now? Where's the Ravens? Not here, it's Detroit.
No, I'm just bringing this up. It's basically in the same area. Originally with Grim Road, we were gonna eliminate the Raymond Lift Station. So with that not happening and the development in Antioch Marketplace, it'll really change to upgrades to the Raymond Lift Station, which hopefully we will push back on the develop.
Okay, okay, and so that, so we could probably hold on to three. What about these other items that are twenty-five, twenty-six? Are those all already budgeted or in the budget? Are these items that you've marketed, we can address them instead? If you know, that's the way it's, if you don't know.
I would, I would have to look back. A lot of the stuff was put into the budget, but I'm not sure of how old the state it was. That's something that I work here on. I'm not sure about the eighty-three or station canister or the Mystic Code.
What about Crestlane? That was a grant, is that off the radar right now? Are we still, we doing that or?
I would just be a revision that there wouldn't be a grant underneath it, but it is still being actually considered right now with the fine screen. That's one of the items that the engineers study and also is that Crestlane. Part of the study of that fine screen is the, the influence flow from our our collection system, which is, Crestlane is one of the major points, and so is the Shell gas station. In between there, those are two of our direct points to our headwork.
And the fact you were up to three hundred thousand.
And wasn't there at some point an I E P A buying against the village or Crestlane intrusion in the houses? Or is we satisfied?
Backup, yes, there was an issue with installed a backflow. Basically a backflow program or something like that. When it backs up, the plant closes.
I think you say you're being, you're being led by engineering without the like grants or anything at this point, right?
Alright, correct, it's being led, but not for grants. So I'll just have to amend this so it doesn't say.
Okay, anything else on there we need to talk about on this page? Nexus treatment facility, hopefully I see the fine screen's a big one. Yet I ain't relying on your expertise. I think the whole board does on this. Hopefully we don't have any more surprises on this. Before anyone was here, we had a little problem with the concrete in one of the clarifiers. So hopefully that's a non-issue.
No, but I will mention that our treatment plan, even though it was redone in twenty ten. While ago and it's, it's now getting to the point where maintenance is going to become more important there because that twenty-year lifespan on certain, certain infrastructure pieces within the treatment plan are starting to expire or we're starting to have problems with them. It's reflected in this capital and start to see how there's quite a few of them. So that will mainly be focused to be paid out of the water and sewer fund.
Okay, and so can, obviously not today, next time you is, can you move like the ones or maybe like next time we'll highlight the ones if we have them in the budget or they're not like counted for yet? So you know, with these things, there's quite a few of us.
All the treatment plants are put in.
In the budget, okay, good, okay, perfect. Alright, I'm moving on all the way to street maintenance, long-term capital items. Obviously, the road program is sidewalk lifting, I saw it there. I see the Tiffany Road culverts and I see a couple culverts. Grim Roads probably, unless there's money that falls out of the sky, probably not something that's happening right now. And then I think Dennis, did you have something in, I know we had some money. We budget anything this year for redoing like maybe fifty thousand dollars for the sidewalks again downtown. We, we cut that, I can't remember.
I didn't budget anything.
Okay, so there's nothing for the sidewalk portion, like, because I know we do like a little bit of the.
Yeah, we did, oh, some maintenance, maintenance items last year. But I didn't, I don't think anything was budgeted this year.
Okay. Like, I think we tried to. That service remediation is gonna tear up a lot of those.
Yeah.
Pounds, okay.
And I think, I think we accomplished most of the.
The ones from.
Efficient areas.
It may be, because I know I see the, the street painting on there, I know we had like talked about it, that pushed it back a little bit. Do we also put that in part of our streetscape, is that what we're kinda waiting for to see if.
For, for just downtown.
For downtown Lake it may.
Um. Well, part of ma- main is controlled by IDOT, so some of the roadway paintings is done about that, and then some of the roadway painting is.
Uh, I'm sorry, sorry, what is streetlights?
All of the streetlight painting, okay.
No, I said that.
You, you needed to add to it then.
Did I say you just do that?
We moved that to twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
We moved that.
Yeah, we pushed that out.
Okay.
Um, and they're not, they're not in bad condition, originally I was trying to keep it closer to like street painting, so we didn't have that large gap.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, with uh, with submitting IDOT for grant money, that would uh, affect those and. Other streetsapes, spiders thing, if you wanted to spend something on streetlights, so it was pushed out. Uh, one other item is Tiffany, Tiffany Road Culvert. Uh, if you recall, that's another one of the IDOT uh, projects that I submitted. That would be replacing that large culvert for Sequoia, Sequoia Creek. Crossing underneath Tiffany and then repairing the road and extending the sidewalk to connect the one seventy-three from the bike path, there's no sidewalk there, so. I'll revise this one, uh, depending on what IDOT.
Can we uh, grow the uh, Oakwood Nole's one on this page, so we have it like on there to?
I, I, yeah, I can put it on there.
Ridgewood. Yeah.
On my list.
Okay. I hope you're here when you're talking about the SSA stuff, really good, okay.
Well, I think, I think part of the SSA, what Michael Mears, from my understanding, his main focus was for dredging that channel. They didn't plan on doing anything with that culvert.
And that's what I kinda questioned you, you had in there like, using SSA reserve for planning and funding or something, and I wasn't sure what you meant by that on the.
On the list of that first page.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I've been, every time I see him now, he corners me about this, I would not follow this conversation.
Can I just ask a question about that? How is dredging that channel going to benefit the people who live in up with us? Just, I.
I, I.
Why would they pay for that?
Here you go, for all the people that don't want to like, yeah.
Honestly, everybody here should at some point go look.
I did, I looked at it.
What did you?
Oh, long time.
Go there now, because go for, you know where Ron Schlong lives and, and Larry's house, you know where Larry's house is there?
Right.
If you go look back there, the, the Abbey Estates, between the Abbey Estates and Oakwood Knolls, you had the, you had the lagoon area. The boat launch, yes, the, the former boat launch, the canoe launch now, or the kayak launch, that they can get down because of the, it's much.
Sure.
Some, somebody bought all the land be- between Abbey Estates and Oakwood Knolls. And they cleared it all out and it turned into a, a semi-private la- I mean, a semi-private lagoon or pond. You, it's a, it's, it, I was looking there, the Schlong's like, you gotta see what happened, and I'm like, what? And I look back there, it's like. Why open waterway? Be, be, so you got the lagoon, you got a little, little spin of land there with I think a, a pipe that comes through it that we clear once in a while. And then the guy's got wet, a, a beautiful wet land.
Kind of behind Larry's.
Landscape, yeah.
Right? Yeah.
It's, it's quite amazing what he did there, he, he totally terr- uh, changed the whole environment in that area over there and turned it into a. A miss, a, a, a new pond, water flow.
And I can see how the, the culvert would be our responsibility if that's.
Culvert's definitely our responsibility.
But dredging that, like I said, I, I, I lived on that lake, I have family lives on the lake, the lake seems pretty healthy now, they had that incident where the. Owner of the BP let the, all the water out, that, that left the, uh, left it open, and the water level was so far down.
There's still a lot of weeds in the, in the lake, it's, it's still a weedy lake, but the lagoon itself probably has this much water sitting on eight feet of muck. So if you fall in the muck, you're gonna die. And, but the people who originally bought the property there, they, they could, they could have their pontoons and everything in the channel, and they'd pontoon themselves out to the lake. And now they want the village and all the other residents to clean the channel for them, cleaning, putting their pontoon boats back out there and. Pontoon back over the lake, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, Mike, Mike has nailed me a couple times, asking for my support on the SSA there, I, I really struggle with it because I understand we drain a lot of water there. The, the areas around there have impacted the vision of that channel, and, but. I don't want to pay extra money for somebody else's benefit.
And I don't know if people even want it, but if there was something like sidewalks around the whole community, then I could say, okay, if everybody's getting sidewalks, that's something that they might get behind, but um. You know, and if that was part of it, but I don't, that's something that.
Not that I would.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a big number, I did a small study.
I'll never make it again.
The um.
So it's a, it's a.
Okay, well, let's put the culvert at least on there and then, um, like I said, I'll say, when Mike gets, he'll say, you gotta talk to people.
Okay, I understand.
Um, I don't know what to say about it, I don't know how we do it, I mean, for me, and I wasn't here and it's not twenty figures anybody, but. How that subdivision got built without a retention contract there is the issue.
It was started back in.
That is the retention.
That is the retention.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was designed, but there's springs back, there's a spring back there also.
Okay.
And, but it was designed to all the water to kinda flow there, or in front of my house.
Okay, yeah.
It's cause you.
And so people are the board or who are here before, you know, the abbey was there and some farm fields, so at times a heavy rain, all the mud would just drain down the streets.
That was one of the, that was under Maryland's science that, that handled that.
So just all filled up, but it's the, into this little lagoon, but.
Same for chain.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 that's, that'll be, okay, so, anything else on this page for the street stuff? Here comes some, here comes some big items, I think, we haven't talked about for a while, we got big items, so items that need to be addressed, which are just the facilities that we own. What type of things are gonna be needed, um, you know, the village hall roof, Dennis, is this for the new village hall, that seventy-five thousand, or is that the old?
Big, yes.
Because it, yeah, um. Obviously, the PW stuff could come out, but then you get down to stuff like the ban shell roof, the ban shell bathroom, uh, senior center. Metro roof. So there's a bunch of these things on here that, again, I think we should just keep identifying, or have Dennis tell us, hey, these are priorities that I would be asking for. But is anything out here, Dennis, that you need to address right now that, you know, is not here, that we should be moving off or, um. Are any of those items, the twenty-five thousand budgeted for this year, do you know? What's that?
Which, which items?
Um, these are like the, I mean, some of our, any of the PW stuff is a matter, like the ban shell roof, and I think the metro roof were on there.
Yeah, I believe those two are.
Okay.
What about the scout house roof? Let's not do for twenty forty-three. Kind of leads me to a question, what's our maintenance on the scout house these days? Are we doing anything, are we using it all anymore or?
Good question. Um, we, uh, the Parks to Recreation Department is not using it currently at this time, um, the scouts are using it right now, um, but that. My vision for future use of that building hasn't been determined yet, um, I haven't even gotten over there to do like a full evaluation of the building or anything like that. So, TBA.
Any other uh, facilities, police station, anything coming up on? Here we have it, generators being replaced in this, like this, we've got it, um. I think we're, we're all just waiting for the HVAC system to fail at some point, right Dennis, is that? It's aged.
What's HVAC?
Age for the PD building.
I know, I know we've had issues with it and uh. Well, we just changed vendors. Well, I wanna get a kinda evaluation from them on it. Okay, we're using them or we're just services prior.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get an evaluation, they should be in soon doing kind of a seasonal. Maintenance.
Get their opinion.
Yes.
So I don't, I can't remember where the previous maintenance contract was for the large system in the building, but. Five years ago, I think they put a number of about a hundred and sixty thousand. With uh, AC and boiler. All that goes, it was a big number, again, it's twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Anything on this, well, hopefully, I've reminded me, we'll put that naming back up for the senior center, hopefully, the Dolly Spirit Center, whatever's gonna be named, but. Is there anything that we see coming up on that building that, I mean, I know it's being used now for camps and private groups, so is that building in good shape, Dennis, right now?
I believe so, um, we can do an evaluation on it, I, nothing, nothing jumps out at me.
What about the old house that's attached to it?
That was gone through, um. Ahaz operated out of most of it, but yeah, that was gone through, it was re-roofed, uh. Cause I know.
Yeah, it's, it's like functional, right, but it needs some love. It needs some, you know, the, the floors need to be done, the paint needs to happen, the carpet in the old house part needs to be ripped out and thrown away. It needs some, some beautification, um, because the bones seem to be good and the roof is, you know, functional, all that, but. There's not a lot of people that wanna use it or pay money to rent it in the shape that it's in.
Well, it reminds me of what it looked like twenty years ago, when whoever donated it to the village, donated it to the village, or how.
The house.
Thirty years ago, still same, forty years ago, whatever, same, same carpet and everything.
Yeah.
I think if that'd be. Like the same dust off.
Oh, no.
Next question, who designed that parking lot in the way that, to the driving, you, the way the stalls or stuff, they're like.
I have, I told Dennis, I'm like, we need to rip this out.
I think the police department did to prevent people from uh.
You can't get in or out, you're going the wrong way.
Imagine the eighty-five-year-old lady trying to figure out how to drive, park in that.
You should see the camp parents, it's just a free-for-all.
Yeah, that thing should be looked at, like restarting that thing, cause that's like reversed.
Tell them about my, my proposal, I do, did a drawing, I had lines, he was like, you don't know what you're doing. And I'm like, but I tried.
Yeah, so that, that, that parking lot, if we're using it more, especially for camp jobs and stuff, it's just the, the parking stalls seem to be backwards.
Well, you can't see the parking stalls, and I think now with the fire department, like, that got rearranged, so it doesn't make sense anymore.
A lot of it doesn't, cause the village doesn't own most of that area, most of it's owned by the, do you have the senior center lot, but the PD area, the truck between us, that's all fire department property. We don't own a lot of that property, so without the fire department with access, you, you have the back entrance, which is why it flowed that way, I suspect. Yeah, okay.
And if you look at that parking lot, it's not like a rectangle or square, it's oddly shaped.
Yeah, from the air.
Yes.
Is it really?
Mm-hmm.
You don't talk about it.
Very bizarre, yes.
Kinda weird.
It's like my lot.
And then at the, at the south side, it goes like this, all of a sudden, and you're like, but I don't know, I can't, yeah, you don't know what to do in there.
Uh, okay, just sort of put it on there, okay, anything else on the building maintenance that we need to look at?
Uh, sawmill, I know there's, there's a couple things for the sawmill on here.
We have like a hundred thousand, I thought we were.
Oh, that's under the sawmill maintenance, I'm sorry.
I thought we, yeah, I, I had wrote that down too, cause I thought at one time we had like a hundred thousand, we were trying to put towards redoing Sawmill and I don't know whatever happened to that.
I don't know either.
We discussed it, but we never made a budget.
Yeah, and that number, I think, was just pulled out of the air.
Okay.
Because.
Yes. Who builds the water rail these days?
Well, and that's just it, I mean, if you wanna make a project out of it, what are, what are we looking to accomplish, and we were just talking about. You know, redoing the wheel and then there was talk about redoing all the landscaping and so. I mean, it's basically thrown on there with a number, so. We are aware of it when we look at this, but I think there needs to have like clear direction on what we wanna do, cause the mill, uh. The wheel itself, the building's in pretty good shape, we re-roofed it or had it re-roofed a few years ago. The siding we replaced as needed, but the wheel itself, to have that redone, is going to be a very large project. There would be a sawmill that's contracted to cut those pieces and then how they would crane them in there to put it together. Uh, you know, so, it's, you know, what. What project do you wanna see specifically?
Yeah, sure, and I mean. I also think, I mean, it was a village project, but these are the projects where I think we try and get creative, like, okay, I mean, Lions Club will do something, probably, you know, they're doing the park right now, but.
They bankrupt, they just bankrupt themselves.
Yeah, they bankrupt themselves, you know, Northridge Church is sometimes looking, so some of these private-public partnerships, like, hey, you wanna get on board with this project with us? I don't know, I mean, no, it's been talked about at the Parks Board meetings eons ago, I thought there was maybe a plan, but I don't think that made it to the. Well, this is one of them, like, one of the biggest things I've learned from talking to Dennis, like, the way historically, I think, these things have been better approached, is everything's been kind of a piecemeal approach, like, let's. Look at the sawmill itself versus trying to look at things as a project at large, right? Like the whole, like the whole Gage's Brother Park needs a refresh, right, you figure out what that total cost is gonna be and try to attack it at the ban shell, rather than just. Piecemealing repairs on the ban shell, what is that entire campus gonna look like, and how do we work towards that larger improvement project? So otherwise, all you're doing is just, again, you're just refreshing little components and everything else around it looks bad.
Each area should have like a, like a master plan and phases to each of those.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we should be looking at it, but, but we should put something on there for the, what do we call it, the Sawmill Park.
Gage's Brother.
One, one thing. It could be the Gage's Brother Park and Sawmill sponsored by Fisher Paper Brothers.
That sign will be gorgeous, maybe you can light up.
You know, at one point it was discussed, well, why don't we just do the sawmill and Gage's Park like we did back when they built it in, like seventeen, I mean nineteen seventy-six, not seventeen seventy. Nineteen seventy-six.
He was chosen for a log that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Uh, and the problem you run into these days is, you don't have the bone craters like you used to, I mean.
What, how was it, tell me more about nineteen seventy-six, what happened, like, how did that?
Larry probably knows more than I do.
I know, well, I know.
Brother was very, it was a.
I know that.
They built a.
It was a lot of Chris Shepherd's family, right, was involved in that lawsuit, yeah.
His dad. Well, Shepherd was second book of course, I believe, and he engineered it.
Oh, they, they engineered it, they got the wood, they built it by hand, they had groups build it, they.
They were, the wood was all donated at times, they donated their fame and donated all their time, and they built that. And it actually, and say they cut wood, yeah, it works, yeah. And then a child was killed, right, no, that I know, so then they had to stop that. And it just deteriorated, I was always wondering if we could just put the wheel. Don't, don't turn it, just build it back, it's in. From water over it.
I don't.
Make it look like it's a wheel. But that's.
But you, but you don't have, you don't have people to do that anymore, I mean, yeah, the lions were doing the civilian, but, you know, they're not doing it for free, somebody's making some money doing that, and. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know how you, I don't know how you do things like that anymore.
You, you can't.
The Daniel Park itself was like a mate.
Right. Wait, no, you got a hat, Howard, that one's mine, you got a hat.
Oh, you have, okay, sorry. See, I don't know which is which.
Hey, Mark, the mom is saying.
Or the ban shell could be revenue on the chip.
What does she have in hers?
Or you have it in.
Um, that's another.
I brought up. All in black, ban shell.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
One is creepy. Is now the time that we look at, is facing that, even just on a color.
Do they give you?
They set up.
No, no, it's like, like, yeah.
Do we match something similar to what's down, down, like great building as far as color space?
Yes.
So, as, as I look at these projects and doing these maintenance, and we've talked about maybe ripping out some, skip more pavement and putting grass, so it's. Continuous from the ban shell to the sled, uh, sled. Cause I'd hate to re-roof the building the same color as it is now.
That would's the shell.
Yeah, and maybe kinda, you know, going a little bit further and, and looking at the future and how we wanna do it.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I was talking to Howard about this, like, I, I haven't looked at our facade program, but I think we should as a board look at, of bending it to allow. The back, no, the back, the back of the buildings to follow five-four too.
Oh, come on, you don't, you don't like that guy who, when he got in trouble for having roof parties with no railing around, and just put two-by-fours and build a two-by-four railing?
Oh, sure.
And then left it plain.
No, I mean, I looked at the back, like, uh, Station Fifty-One and the Sonic Lodge, and that building, like, the paints peeling, I mean, those buildings, you know. Ten, twenty thousand dollars can go a long way on the back of those buildings.
I had a tenant on Thursday telling me that she has to climb a ladder to her apartment.
Yeah, so.
I don't think that's not true.
So let's maybe, let's maybe start. So let's maybe, let's maybe start getting those with the facade grants, when you have that already, Howard, you know, maybe incorporate that the, the back of the buildings on Main Street would also qualify, so, especially in that area.
You don't want to pay a hundred thousand for PML, PNL, the theater.
Maybe, maybe, but.
Because money's only a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's either they get it or other people get it.
They got to come in first to do it, yeah?
Um. Every building downtown.
Oh, yeah, I meant the, I meant the parking lots, right? Is that where it next? Parking lots, tennis courts, Jensen Park, asphalt, um. What are the, I feel like this is one that we probably, the Parks Board has been talking about for years, oh, this goes out in two pages, all the park maintenance stuff, a lot of park maintenance stuff, but not a lot of numbers filled in, and I feel like, uh, bringing Katie in, one of the things that. I truly believe is that, you know, whatever our programming ends up being, and she's working on improving that, like, we really certainly need to allocate money towards park maintenance and make the parks look better, even if that means taking some of the parks that are underutilized and, you know, maybe take, if there's thirty-eight parks and there's four of them, like, there are a couple of parks that even though existed, I guess they are for a neighborhood, but, you know, really putting a plan together for this, because, uh, as you can see, there's a lot of blank spaces on this, we have a lot of parks that probably need some, some work. So I don't know where we, you know, that money comes from and, you know, how that goes, maybe that it's extra money that I'm talking about going into the public works budget, so they can use that budget to use it for some of these park projects, um, but there's a lot of them, and, you know, some of them like Jensen Parking Lot, I think, you know, we need to decide what is Jensen Park going to be anyways, you know, is it going to be a dog park, or is it going to be what is today, you know, there's these things.
I've been one on board twenty-four years now. I've never been able to successfully make it to Jensen.
Me neither.
I, I drive around looking, going, where the hell is this place?
Then I don't feel so bad, because it's been four months now.
Camp, you camp use a lot, but.
People play tennis there all the time, though they do, because I can hear the balls, because that's where I live, but it's terrible.
About park, but, okay, you, you guys were good, because this is something I'd like to see as the board really, you know, focusing on, have a, you have some new parks coming, but we have some, um, we have two parks that would be really nice within a mile or two, and then we have, you know, Springer Park's pretty good, it's a good park.
Because you want to have the big ones.
Harp doesn't have anything, I'm not saying that for personal purposes anymore, uh, the, Club Land is a nice park, but that's really run by the association, um, there is that parkland that I think some groups are using now for the cross, and that was just never been.
Oh, yeah.
A sports park.
Yeah.
Utilized, um, Peterson Park, I don't really go there, because I, every time I did, I had so many mosquito bites, I never want to go back, um, I'm trying to think of what other ones, but we should start thinking about these, I really think the two that. We don't have on here, or maybe we do, that I really am really interested in, I hope the board is, is that properly bought on fifty-nine, because that's very visible, and, um, it would be how people get to the downtown, and after all the controversy, either fabricated or real, the Bill Brook, Bill Brook property has been neglected for twenty-some years, so we're going to make it nicer with the memorial, we make, and we're going to be Village Hall there. I would love to see those trails be something that connect to like where Village Hall is and make it a real thing, um, but we got to figure out how to do it, and we talked, you know, we've talked a lot about parks, Katie and I had conversations, but like, one of the, one of the problems of being, you know, a community that's grown over the years, probably will continue to grow, is we continue to add new parks, right? I mean, the downtown park is fantastic, but it's going to suck money out of the budget to maintain it, when we have a lot of existing parks that have been neglected, ready, Ozlet Grant is great, but it, it only comes around so often, it proves, so what do we do in the meantime with?
Like, for, like, for example, any of the parks that are along the path that goes through town, that is high visibility and accessibility from east to west, right?
What are they talking about, sorry?
So, um, well, like Tim Osmond all the way down, right, obviously, high accessibility, high usage, you know, all of that, and then, um, not necessarily the neighborhood parks, but Seacote Creek runs along that path, um, the Senior Center, the, the Parks Building, Previous Public Works, the, um, Osmond Brothers Park.
Yeah.
Would, which.
By your house.
Yeah, um, and then, I think that.
What's in Chippewa Park?
So. Those, all of those parks are used a lot more than, say, neighborhood parks by more people, um, according to my education and experience, not with actual data, but I could probably get it from Kim.
Yeah.
Um, because of their accessibility for walking, biking, golf carts, like, all of that stuff, and those parks, and obviously Centennial, um, because of its location, have more traffic, so those would be parks that we would ideally want to focus on first, because they service more people than a little neighborhood park.
Like, what about, like, Trever Creek Park? How many people use Trever Creek Park? I used to go to Little League there once in a while.
Um, I haven't, I haven't been there yet.
It's, it's a nice little park, but I don't think, but, uh, when I walk through neighborhoods, I'm hard to see any out there, but it's kind of cold when I walk.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of Osmond Park, is that park safe? I wouldn't get some of the equipment there.
No.
It's like, it's not like, it's not like the rocking back and forth things.
Yeah, on the spring, yeah, it's terrifying.
The kids are going to take a deep down.
My children say that.
That, that should be removed immediately.
That whole park, that whole playground needs to be gone away and replaced.
What's the, what's the, the status of the equipment, because it's mentioned in here, that the playground equipment in, um. At the scout house.
That needs to be replaced as well.
Is that old and unsafe too?
Well, you know, I, I haven't gone out to do an inspection on either of those parks, but I would say it's very old. Playgrounds last ten years, like, the way, the way that playgrounds are built now, their turnover is every ten years, the way your playgrounds used to be produced, that are metal and the slide burned your butt going down, right? Those lasted a lot longer, but they're not.
You know, I fell off one of those as a kid, one of those slides.
Yeah.
It hung to a, a, a blacktop pavement.
Yes, and now we have, you know, appropriate, appropriate fall zones.
They use to hang their head underneath the merry-go-round, they, they just got rid of that, but I just love that thing.
They have them still, they're just safer.
The old tumble drums.
Yeah, right, so playgrounds here that are more than ten to fifteen years old are in dire need of replacement, which I would say is all of them except for Seacote Creek.
Well, now we should, I think at a minimum, we should go through each park and identify what is an unsafe piece of equipment, and possibly start a, 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 a hailstorm and, and pull that out of there, because if somebody, I mean, on that. Thing on the spring, I mean, they've made people remove, they, those things were removed from parks thirty years ago, when probably fifty thousand kids lost their, their front teeth.
Yeah.
Well, that was part of me, some of those, those costs, right, what the, the Parks Master Plan that was done previously, you know, we, we all kind of laughed about the dollar amounts that were involved with that, with that master plan, but that was based on the condition of our current parks, how much it would truly cost to get our parks up to stump, remember it was two, three million dollars?
You probably have all this data.
Yeah, and the, the plan is not bad. I've been through the plan. The timing of the plan is extremely unrealistic unless all this money is.
Well, I, 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 I always wonder, and maybe you still do this, like, the Parks Board, with previous directors, you said before every meeting, go meet at a park and walk it.
We had one scheduled last night.
But then what, but the, what, like, what happens afterward, like, they do the walk, and they look at stuff that's bad, but I've never seen anything come to us, being like, hey, we'd like to fix this, but this needs to be fixed, but then it comes. But where does the information, where does the information start?
Well, well, it'll come to me, and I can bring it to leadership and then bring it to a board meeting when we get through those statements.
And then we discuss it like I am right now, and then, then next thing, we discuss something else.
Yeah, exactly, there's.
But that's why, but that's why, that's why, we're going to, well, this is going to be our living document.
We have a lot of, a lot of chatting and no execution, yeah, we have.
And that's why, and that's why we got to keep this documented, like I said, first, like I said, we can have some big projects, but these are the ones that I think, like, I think we all can agree are the ones we got to add some money to. Um, all right, so that's quite a bit of, uh, work, and I think, obviously, I think the least of the, uh, actual numbers are on the parks, we really got to start with some, whether it's from experiences from the Parks Master Plan, now let's take the Parks Master Plan, start inserting it into this document, so we can actually see if we can afford this stuff, because, otherwise, you said, we're just going to keep looking at the.
Would it be, um, what I'm hearing you say is maybe I should look at the master plan compared to this and prioritize.
Put a bullet in the Chevy T and say, give me a plan.
Yeah, make a plan, um, and prioritize some of those things and bring it back for discussion in the future.
Yeah, and I said, I, I would assume that at the latest, we would do this again, you know, next January, December's a bad time, October to January, in that timeframe.
I will. You're going to be right next to me in my office.
I know. All right, now, let's talk about things that aren't on there, that are wish list items, if anybody has that, any wish.
We just talked about all my.
I have one of them, I mean, Amy probably has some stuff for IT, one of the things I like when I went to the park, a couple of things, like, are we, are we, it's probably a private thing, but like, are we ever going to get umbrellas or anything there, for like, you know, there's, sit out there and have coffee, and you'll die, die of sun poisoning, um, or, you know, it'd be nice if we had, I put it for grants, like downtown Wi-Fi or Wi-Fi for, you know, the area, those are some things that are not on these lists, but might be good things to look at.
Look into that.
Okay.
Um, a lot of them are public-private partnerships, right? Like, the Wi-Fi is, um, set up by that, and it can range, depending on the size of the park, anywhere from, you know, three thousand dollars a year to a hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on the speed and all of that, you know, all of that.
Plus, you also have to promote the sponsor, the.
Put the side up.
T-Mobile Park.
Yeah.
I mean, something that we should continue, I think, put up these lists, but like, you know.
Can we just put an air mesh up or something?
Yeah, I don't know.
Have our, have our Wi-Fi service and then put an air mesh, A Y R.
Well. With an IT supportive one, and it goes down on the weekends, or, you know, you have to think of the backend support of it, um, and the support costs associated with it, there are Wi-Fi services out there that I didn't reach out to that does advertising for those Wi-Fi services and internet, um, that you receive ads for every fifteen minutes, that you're connected to it and stuff like that. Based on our demographics and, uh, population, I did not get any likes at that time, um, now that we do have Placer and we have, um, a, a little bit more to go on with. How much, um, traffic we have at the park and stuff, I might be able to go back to them and see if, uh, they would be interested in there again.
Back to that city, right, how like the boy, you're at the airport.
For, in, in the, I always, um. Us as a village, we have to be really careful on what services we are looking to provide, um. And the liability of those services, you know, if we're providing that service and then we go to do any sort of, like, for any wireless mesh, and then we decide to put, um, block service, we block certain sites, then are we, um.
Censoring.
Censoring, but then if they're at a park and they are browsing inappropriate sites on our network, then there's also that issue, so then as a village, we, i- i- it opens all can of worms that you really want to.
I'm getting PTSD of the book discussion.
Or, you know, gambling and all of that, so it's just, it's, it's a lot of times not stuff that you just kind of go, you know what, it's better off that we just don't get ourselves involved in it.
And once Jim Kaya was talking about, like, programs, like, where they have community Wi-Fi, like downtown.
Right.
Wi-Fi, is that the same thing what you're talking about, or is that something different?
Correct.
Um, and any bits of the list of the rules.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The Seacote Creek scrolls.
Yeah, you got, you got exactly that, because I go to hospitals, and they have, you know, you have the science, science and third display, and they control their content.
So, but they're not, they're not a government agency. A lot of hospitals are private.
I would very much prefer we do not get into the business of having Wi-Fi, really, our quality is an attractive thing, and if you go down to, like, uh, Oak Street Beach, you would find Wi-Fi down there, between not only the potential liability or the public, public perception liability, if there is some sort of internet issues that go on there, um, we don't have the infrastructure to do it, I've been through this before, and my advice always remains, it is an attractive thing, and if there's something on there, go buy a hotspot or go to Starbucks, if you want free Wi-Fi, go have fun if you want to.
So I think the ultimate turn to tell me that's crap. Elegantly, no, yeah, yeah, okay, well, again, maybe we work with Anna to figure out in some way that even at the cafe or something, they could have something private that, you know.
Now, if she wanted to do it, that's fine, because it's her Wi-Fi, and she could advertise her stuff on there, and when someone downloads a way to build a bomb on there and it traces back to there, it goes to Anna's and not to us.
Crazy world.
Who can beat her, right?
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, well, something, something to talk about, something to think about, um, Amy, now you're, I was going to say you're a big capital, I mean, police, so Jeff, Dennis, Amy, you're the ones that are the, you know, you have the most capital type stuff, the things that aren't on these lists that we need to be thinking about, because there wasn't really a lot of police vehicle things on here, and that's all, you have that all mapped out?
Yeah, we have, we keep a five-year, okay, replacement plan, um, kind of jiggity-wag right now because of the car market that we had for a while, where we bought several cars in here, so it's going to hit us, I have about four, three, four years, we'll have a larger influx of purchasers, that will need to make, um, the placing, the largest capital item for the police department as a whole at some point, it's going to be. Probably five years, maybe a little bit more, like the ten-year range is a major facility overall, we're going to run out of space, legitimately just use the last closet, it's an office, so we have a janitor's closet, but I don't think we'll fit anyone in there, but.
Is there, is there, is there a way to add onto the career?
That's, that's what we'd have to get into, so like, one of the things that we're in the process now, we decided, thank, we're planning for, uh, facilities, space analysis, hopefully for next year, we try to budget the cost of the study, to at least let us know what we're up against, what our options may be, and that way we've got time to discuss and grow, um, you know, building a holy, non-ADA compliant, and, um, you know, we had a, we hired a handicapped employee right now, we'd have a lot of challenges, a lot of problems. Our locker rooms to door access to parking lots to, if you name it.
Okay, so at some.
So you need like a five-year, ten? Yeah, I think, I think we'll go a little bit along, um, I don't see a lot of, a lot of growth over the next couple of years, but you know, as, you know, Lenar's looking at putting like a four or five hundred homes, and we're talking about annexing them, you know, down south, a little bit different areas, those all have public works, police resources, where, you know, suddenly the, the town grew and I had to hire five officers, I don't have enough lockers to house that.
I've got an old building coming to make it for soon, it's got some jail cells in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Sell it to me for about a plate bucks?
Any items that were, even if you have an arena that aren't on these lists?
So, most of my items go into the operating budget, because they're replacement costs.
Okay.
So the only things that may go into any type of a capital would be any new items that would be on the directive of the board.
Okay.
Um, that would be the larger ones, if it's like the Seacote Creek or something, or a village wide camera system, which was a couple of years ago, but the maintenance of the camera systems now are going to be built into my, uh, annual capital plan, or I mean, uh, operating budget, like, as a replacement cost of those. One, one thing. That, um, was in Amy's area that has now been transferred over to mine is the Thor Guard lightning detection system.
The what?
What?
Lightning.
The Thor Guard lightning detection system.
I thought you said door guard.
No, Thor Guard, yes.
Stop it, so it's like, got it.
Yes, yes, Thor Guard, yes, um, so that will be moving from Village Hall to new Village Hall, and that's a big expense that I believe is budgeted for, um, but then the annual maintenance and things like that, and potential upgrades and all of that stuff.
Is for the pool.
It's for all the whole village has, different stations, but the main station is at Village Hall, like, in case it goes down or things like that. And it's always been in the park's budget.
Okay.
Uh, Dawn's taking care of it. Oh, sorry. Higher too, no, that's, yeah, uh, so, uh, it's a, it's a yearly maintenance, so it's a reality cost.
But the big, but there's a larger cost to move it.
I, and that was just because of the Seacote.
Because of the Village Hall move.
More, yes.
Yes.
Back to parks real quickly, one sec.
Yeah.
When we do with our budget special, I thought I saw a, a, a line item for, for Osmond Park, four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, but we budgeted possibly twenty-nine when we, when the budget was approved.
It was not four hundred ninety-six thousand.
There was, there was like a, there was like a, a sixty thousand dollar, and I remember we cut it down to like.
It was sixty, then I was like, okay, fifty, and then you knocked it down to twenty-five.
Where are we with, uh, Mr. Shawna sees five hundred thousand dollar request?
I already know.
We didn't pair that in anymore.
We said, we said, we said, this is a moving forward basis, not a looking backwards basis, so that's kind of how it was. Um, yeah, good question, um, any other capital items that we didn't get through, I mean, again, this is a working document, I'm glad we asked, we're going to work off of now. Was that, yes, Steve. Uh, we're not, uh, yeah, the speed one, we'll put that in the. We'll put that in the S S A, yep.
So I have Hitting Creek that keeps reaching out to me, so you created a new HOA. Hitting Creek.
Oh, yeah.
There's two items that they keep asking and I said, I'm gonna, you know, when we have a meeting like this, to bring it up. Street name signs, there's no signs there.
No, there's signs. They wanna, they wanna upgrade them.
And then streetlights. There's no streetlights.
The original developer did not put streetlights in.
Yeah, he wanted to keep everything rustic. I read about that. But as we move forward, is there a possibility?
I would, I, it was a possibility for anything, but who's gonna bear the cost?
S S A, that's, that's, that's what I brought up with the new person that came to see me.
I was gonna say, salt, make it solar.
But at the same time, you're right there next to the, they back up the red wing slew and that's a lighting issue for the the birds, where we're killing five billion birds a year because of lighting and other things that produce birds and lights. In the creek, absolutely broke.
Right, Hitting Creeks are large lots, septic and well water. It was built in a rustic manner, it was built, you know, little by little, piecemeal, but the grand vision was never there. But there's no, there's no streetlights, so some, some of the residents are a little scared. That there might be people waiting for them to jump in.
I would think Eagle, I think Eagle Ridge might be there, right? Is this something that, well, I would say that on that one, I would tell them, you know, get your HOA board together and come to public comment to say, you know, kind of what? It was insane.
They applied for a point to look through their files because the person who owned the property eventually moved down.
Okay.
Greg Miller. Right?
Was he way in the back? Yeah, there's the thing, well, it's, I, I know that a guy that owns a bunch of commercial property downtown just moved back there, so I wonder if that's moved into that house, I think.
So they're, they're really looking for assistance and I'm trying to help them as best as I can.
Yeah. All right, I will tell them you brought the board's attention and put it on our list.
For twenty-fourty-eight.
Yeah. Um, all right, so I think we got through all the, the capital stuff. And then here's the other one. Let's, okay, let's make Michael sweat a little bit here, let's talk about funding, okay? As you know, I personally hate doing anything that's gonna keep impacting the property taxes of the residents, okay? And through no fault of anybody, I mean, every mayor I know in Lake County is going to do something regarding the sales tax and the grocery tax, okay? Except Dominic, because he says that we're just giving Springfield a pass for their bad behavior with the LGD F fund, but I said, Dominic. Oh, fight that battle another day. Yeah. And the nurses, yeah, okay, so here's the, the data. I believe our budget that we looked at was Michael had incorporated the one percent on the sales tax and no grocery tax, correct?
One percent non-home rule municipal retail tax.
Retail tax. And we currently have a a business district, central business district tax that covers a lot of the areas, but not all of them. I said there's a sunset provision. Our tax rate in those areas is eight percent, okay? Gurneys just went up to eight and a half percent. But I believe if we do did the one percent, some areas would go up to eight and some areas would go to nine, is that correct, Michael?
Thirty-seven to nine, they weren't eight.
No, they're due to the half, to the half, to the half, yeah.
I thought they were nine.
We could do some research on this. I mean, I was going for a newspaper article, the Daily Herald, just.
Right, so. The grocery piece, they lose the one and then put the one back on.
Yes.
So it's not like across the board, every, every business or every purchase went from eight to nine. But the grocery item. No, that part just comes down. Comes down.
Okay. Um, so like I said, I have Amy, I can share these, I have the other ones on my tablet, but you know, Jewel Asco, I was surprised at this. And I gotta check these numbers because of percentage of visitors, and this is not even come close to equally a hundred percent, but eighteen point nine percent of the visitors from the month of May twenty twenty-four through April twenty twenty-five was eighteen point nine percent that are village residents that come.
Jules?
Six zero 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 two zip code.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's happened just all the old zip code. Lake Villa has about ten percent, then you go to Trever, then you go to Round Lake, Spring Grove. On and on and on, and then, you know, the more diluted factors for people that are farther away. Walmart. Antioch is fourteen percent of the amount of people that shop at Walmart. You got Lake Villa twelve, we're talking about community partners. Uh, what he was saying earlier, we get a lot of money from people from Lake Villa because they're shopping here. So on all these, Round Lake, Trever, I'll put my tablet, but the others were all very similar, same thing with Tractor Supply, Menards. All of them are the highest, that was twenty-six percent. But I was surprised at the grocery numbers, I was thinking, all right, the grocery might be eighty percent Antioch, and the retail might be twenty percent, but it's twenty percent across the board, so if we're talking about relieving the tax burden of our residents and where that money's coming from. I don't know, are people not gonna shop in Antioch if we add another half a percent or percent on the sales tax?
But, but you gotta remember something, when you're looking at that twenty percent, twenty percent may be our whole fourteen thousand population going to that store. Plus another sixty thousand coming from other areas, because we've got a huge.
Yeah, and the man.
Market, so when you're saying.
That blue area on there, you can't really see from that far away, that goes all the way up to like Milwaukee, you know, out of animal.
I mean, so, so you gotta remember that, you gotta remember when you're talking twenty percent.
Yeah.
Twenty percent numerically may be twenty percent of a hundred thousand people coming into the village to shop. Whereas fourteen thousand people in the village go to those, those grocery stores.
Yep.
I go to other grocery stores too.
I do too, I go to, I go to the commissary, I go to Woodman's, I go to.
I mean, I go to Mariano's, I go to Tony's, Dell, I go to all, yeah.
But never one time, ever, in my entire life, did I go to a cash register to buy something and worry about the taxes.
I agree with you. I mean, a tax bill in the mail for property tax, big ticket items, I went to Old Orchard and I was gonna buy something expensive there, they said the tax is like over ten percent, and then I was like, okay, I'll wait, I'll go buy it in Lake County or somewhere else. But I mean, this is, this is something that's going to affect what we can and can't do for a long time, and we really only have one bite at the apple, it's not overall. They gave us this one-time bite at the apple to be either for the grocery tax in and the sales tax, one or the other, a hybrid of them.
We need to do it.
But we need to talk about this, you know, and this is something that the other mayors were talking about.
I keep hearing it on the news.
And are all are gonna be talking about it June, July, August. I think we have until October to pass it, one way or the other. By filed by October.
October first.
October first. So I, I don't know how, you know, we could do it in another cow discussion, we could talk about it now. We could have Michael present like the different scenarios. And then, you know, get it to a vote in, you know, no later than first or second meeting in July, would be ideal.
Now, now, Michael, Michael, the non-home rule retail sales tax, that carves out certain things, right? Food, medicine, that sort of things, those are not taxed. Such, consumables essentially, yeah.
So there's, um, so the grocery tax is worth about nine hundred thousand dollars, so the governor just took away nine hundred thousand dollars. And I'd say you should be going with the two and a half million dollars that would come from the non-home municipal retail tax. That one point six million dollars over the five-year forecasted years is eight million dollars, and we currently have twelve million dollars in capital type items, so you're covering three-fourths of your capital from this. So if you don't pass this, you're, you're looking at a big hole to fill, you know, right now you're like, what other items should we talk about? You better be thinking more about what you have to not do, and a lot of these are maintenance items that must be done, they're not wish list thing, that is not a wish list. They're, they're like needed, you know?
That is like, you always spend on things that needs to be.
Only when he's giving the money.
Yeah.
Give him a bigger credit card.
Yeah. So, I mean, does anyone wanna just speak up about this now, do we wanna push it to a cow, I mean? I think.
It's a necessity after we've never, like, all our budget meetings, I don't see a way around it, or if you're being a financial.
And then, is it either or thing, is it both thing, is it a hybrid thing, like, that's what we gotta decide, is it? You know, we, we say no to the grocery tax, or do the sales tax, I mean.
You can always do the grocery tax later on.
I think we have to start showing the improvements in town, and then we can justify it, and say, hey, look at all these beautiful things we've done in our community. But we're gonna need this, yeah, right, and then.
But there's only a couple of months to do that.
Yeah.
You don't have the time to do that. Yeah.
So, I know we're not getting a lot of direction here, but this will be moving forward quickly, so do your research. I know Michael's getting through a bunch of projects with auditors and so on and so forth. I would encourage you to like talk to other towns, research what our towns are doing on this. Everybody's doing something, I haven't heard anybody that's doing nothing, so, you know, it's either gonna be one or the other, or both, or split of each, but I think we gotta figure out, you can't just have a, a million dollars fall off our revenue, so.
I don't know if Brett's still on the phone, but he's been quite vocal with me on his opinion on this.
Brett, oh. Brett still there?
I am.
All right, there he is, all right, like Star Wars.
Um, I, I didn't quite hear exactly what trustee Pierce said, but I, I'm I'm having a hard time with the sales tax issue. I don't have any problem whatsoever replacing the grocery tax issue. Because the state took that away from us and that can be justified very easily. I think people are taxed out of their minds right now, and, and any tax increase, regardless of how we justify it, is not gonna be received well by the residents of Antioch. Now, even if we just did the grocery tax, we could justify that by saying that the governor in Springfield pulled this from us on a, you know, basically unexpectedly, and this is what we have to do to to replace those funds that the state's no longer allowing us to collect, or that we get our share of. But to add a whole new sales tax on top of it, I think would be doing, I mean, I, I just had some conversations with a business owner in town, they're, they're about one month away from closing. Any additional things that will limit people from coming here, now, I'm not saying, I agree, I don't, I don't recall, I couldn't tell who, which trustee said it about never looking at the, the, the sales tax. I agree with them, I've never looked at that either. But luckily, I'm in a position where that doesn't impact my purchasing. Other people, it is something that they're looking at, and if they know they gotta spend an extra one percent here versus another town, it's something on larger purchases they might take into account. I don't know for a fact that that would happen, but I'm just saying, is people are not, they're, they're taxed out. And, and property taxes keep going up and up like you talked about earlier. If we're gonna start increasing the sales tax every, you know, time something like this happens, I mean, it's, we're gonna tax people out, these businesses aren't gonna be able to compete. We're already having issues with the growth, you know, the, the, the reason with the, the gas tax and people going over the border and buying their gas, I mean, I do, it's a lot cheaper. And it will just, I think we're could shoot ourselves in the foot if we pass a, a general sales tax, but I have no problem replacing the grocery tax.
So, as finance director, what I'm hearing is two trustees are not supportive of the non-home rule sales tax. And that I should remove eight million dollars of revenue from our resources, and we need to start focusing on cuts of a serious magnitude. Because there is no other really options for a non-home rule community to raise money that isn't going to affect the community. And you can't raise property taxes, eight million dollars, over the five-year period. You have caps. So there's no other revenue sources, so then your only option is make the serious cuts, and then we're getting, now we have direction.
I, I.
You may look at it as revenue. I look at it as the people's money and, and Brett's got, I, I hate to say it, people are absolute. I'm lucky, I got a good job, I got plenty of money in the bank, I, I don't brag about it, I'm basically a millionaire, which I'm very proud to say, but I don't brag about it. Married, nice and retired, got, she's got a good, good financial income, Brett just said he did, I'm sure Jose does too, all of us are doing fairly well in this room. There are a lot of people in this town that are one paycheck away from, from having to go to the groups such as ATC and, and everything, and as we keep banging on them for, oh, let's, let's do the credit card fee, let's do this, let's do that, let's get this money in here, let's get that money in there. There's people in this town that aren't affluent and lucky like me. And, and we have to think about those, so when you're saying it's revenue we're losing, it's money we're not taking from people.
Right.
Okay, so we have to, we have to balance that and, and come up with a way, and I don't know what the way is yet, to, to not have such a major impact, and, and, and it just irritates me beyond belief that our governor has put us in this position, and that our school districts put us in this position. They are ravenous beasts that are eating us out of house and home. And, and now they're coming to the mayor saying, oh, let's share the village money, give us some of the village money. And that's more money we gotta figure out how to replace. You know, we, we, people there's lucky people in this town, but there's a lot of people that are living on the edge, and we have to look out for them.
But when the message is, we are making these serious cuts, you're telling those people that have money that the community is not going to provide the services that are needed, the basic services of water mains, sewers, I mean, all of your infrastructure, you just ended it. That message will send all the people that have money out of the community, they're gone. I would bolt.
They're gone.
If I found out you're not going to do the roads, the sewers, the culvers, all of that's gone. You don't have a community, whether rich or poor, you really don't have a community, they're not coming, there won't be developments, it's over.
Can I get, can I get clarification on something, because maybe I'm misinterpreting something you said earlier? I, I, I thought that that eight hundred thousand was the grocery money coming in every year. So if we replace that grocery tax money, why would we all of a sudden be in such a hole?
Because the financial forecast has twelve million dollars of capital needs over the next five years. And this additional one point six million equals eight million of the twelve million if you pass the one percent non-home rule municipal retail tax. So if you do not pass it, you still have twelve million in expenditures that you do not have a revenue source to cover. And those items, again, are needed, they're not luxuries, they're needed.
And, and one of the things I wanna ask, and again, I keep coming back, this is, where do we get our money, it's sales tax and property taxes, and the only way to make up this gap is to keep increasing property taxes, but max rate, the max rate, ideally, if the marketplace does ever happen, or some of these other developments, then we could, you know, just even lower the property tax that the village is taking. I know we don't take a lot of it, seven percent, but, you know, if we can knock fifty, a hundred bucks off the bill, or, you know, ideally, you know, not that we wanna be gurney, they don't even charge a property tax, they get so much sales tax money, I don't know if we could ever get there. But, uh, just, again, this gets serious, this is, this is a big topic that, you know, was going to come to a head, and I guess, you know, we got two months to flush it out and look at the figures and how we feel as a village board, and what our forecast would be with, with different, I guess, funding cocktails of this. But yeah, we're not gonna make a S S A, but this is gonna be at least a two or three meeting thing that we're gonna have to go through and get to a vote.
And there is some level of, I just wanna correct the historical record of this. So everyone says that the governor pulled back the grocery tax, which is true, one hundred percent. But the state administration in Springfield pulled back the sales tax, because the sales tax, and Michael correct me if I'm wrong, was locally imposed at some point in time, the government overlaid itself, the state government said, we're taking all that in, and then they play mess around with, we're gonna give you this cut, we're gonna give that cut, take that from there. And then they play mess around with, we're gonna give you this cut, we're gonna give that cut, take that from there. So to say that this is a locally imposed thing, and this all stops, these sales taxes. And Michael, if I'm wrong, tell me, but these sales taxes were all local imposed. The state big-footed the localities, said, we're gonna run this through the state. And now they're giving a little bit of autonomy back because of that, because and then there's a decision that gets made. And this is, I do not make policy. I don't want to make policy. I would never run for office, no events. Congratulations to all of you who have chosen to do so, but not my bag. The, but the fact of the matter is, if you are gonna increase taxes to increase revenue for the increased services, you can either impose it one hundred percent to the people who live here or you can take eighteen percent, was that village residents or six oh oh two? Was it village residents or six oh? So people, not even eighteen percent, really, because half of the people in six oh oh two, approximately half, live in the township, correct? Okay, so I am not advocating for one position or another, but I do want to make sure that my job is to arbitrate, make sure facts are correct and law is correct. So if you are going to impose additional taxes, if there are services are going up because all costs are going up. If you really want to give relief to the residents, you do it through a tax that's mostly imposed on people who do not live here. That is just kind of common logic. And I know, I don't like paying taxes as much as anybody, okay? I got a little kid, everybody knows, I talk about him all the time, I probably boy all that death about it. But I don't like paying taxes either. But if the cost of things are going up, I can either pay a property tax or sales tax. The sales tax get applied to people who don't live here. That's it's the one thing I want to make clear. We don't walk away from that, either the historical record that this was all stolen from us, from Springfield a long time ago. That's it.
Another funding source that again, kind of ties it to all of this. And again, if you have Dominic from Lynnhurst, the L D D F, that has nothing to do with the L G D F, right?
No, but it's all the same sales tax, like fuck it, right?
But L G D F, is that part of income tax?
Yeah.
Okay, so it used to be, we would get ten percent of the state income tax that people paid. Over time, last five or 10 years, Springfield cut that down like five point some percent. We went out to Springfield every May and told them why we need the money. Legislature says, oh, yeah, we support that. And then they never bring it to the floor. So that's a lot of money too, that's, you know, eventually as trustees and as legislators for Antioch, we need to talk to our local legislators, be like, hey, you guys gotta get on board, giving us that. I mean, you see they have a a very unbalanced budget down there. So they kind of closed part of that gap by taking the funds that were coming here, but you know, we need to spend that money for our local, you know, program. So that's another, I don't know what that number is, L G D F per year, it's not nearly as significant as this, I don't believe, but it's, it's a big number.
Yeah, so.
Is that?
I'm 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 gonna look that up real quick, but just to give you a quick note, property taxes for the general monies is two million dollars. And then, and this tax. So if you didn't do this tax, we'd be like trying to say, we're gonna increase property taxes seventy-five percent to cover for this monies that you won't receive because of this tax, just to give you an idea. And the mayor's number.
One way of looking at that too, but I think it's undeniable that the community demands more and more from us as a as a village. We offer more events, we're trying to expand our parks, we're trying to improve our facilities, we're trying to hire new positions, our costs continue to go up. And there has to be revenue stream for that. And to Michael's point, just in this year, if the board chooses not to move forward with the non-home rule sales tax, which is your will as a board, that's what you decide. That's gonna result in a million and a half dollars in cuts of this existing budget roughly, correct?
And and start, uh, so this year, this year's, but if my point was the five out, the five out years. If you counted this year and the out years, then you'd be like, so it's a partially, yeah, there's four months, four months that's getting cut out. And um of the one point six million versus, you know, the nine hundred thousand, whatever.
Can I ask you a question? When you're saying those numbers, the two point, whatever, that's not existing right now, correct? That's the, that's not unlike, you know, like the grants, I don't want to count something, you know, count chickens before they hatch. That that has nothing to do, say, say somebody actually does come and finish marketplace, that changes that number better for us as well, obviously. Doesn't, so your two million is only based on what we, the existing conditions, right?
Right.
Okay, but a lot of that, but a lot of that new revenue will go into the TIF, right, that not sales. E P D A D growth will go into the TIF, but not the sales tax.
And the money they want, and the money they want upfront.
Yeah, so I mean, if we got, say, say we got a target, they'll just target, say we got a target, that's all, I mean, the money that would come, that target sales tax, but again, that's, you know. But that's also dependent, and it's dependent on incentives, right? Because Raymond gets a very large sales tax incentive. Yeah. So the majority of the growth in sales tax, but they, their terrain is going back to Raymond as part of their incentive. I have no doubt that right now, the proposed ask from the current marketplace developers of mixed incentive of of TIF money plus sales tax.
So we do it in a blended, we do it in a blended, so if we have one and not the other, we can do it, it gives us the flexibility. But if you do, and to that point, if you are gonna, you have to attract businesses to offset for the other reasons. If you don't, you have that money to play with through a crisis. That's that's again, I'm not, I'm not here to push an agenda, but it is, it's out there and it is important to understand all the options that I see from all other places. So, so I'm asking everybody.
I'm gonna have to leave.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap up.
I'll see you guys.
Well, everybody, uh, but just, if, you know, you're leaving or anything early, just do your homework on this issue because it's gonna be something that we're doing here in the next year, at least bringing to the table for how and hopefully for a vote up or down, you know, soon.
Your state income tax number is two point four million a year.
And so if we lost, you know, what, forty percent of that, we probably lost, uh, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand? You know, and we're just. What's that?
Our only opportunity, we're not home rule. We can't raise stuff, we have to follow what's.
And I'm, I'm going along with what Jeff's saying. I am not, I'm not gaining financially or anything from this. I'm just telling you that the direction you're giving us would be cuts. If that's your choosing, then we'll do whatever is to be done. I mean, don't feel like I'm saying is that the work's not gonna get done. It'll get done, but you will see a lot different local government because we're going down to core services. Sorry, Katie, you're probably first on the cutting block.
I'll be leading the charge in all my free time.
But that's how quickly it would change, I'm saying. You know, like it's not a little change, these are big.
Well, in the first half of this whole meeting is for not, correct, Michael?
Yeah, right.
Yes.
With all that down the door.
Kiss that goodbye, like, there goes our playgrounds. I'm glad, I'm glad we crossed the table, so we really gotta be thinking about this. We really gotta be doing our own due diligence on what the, you know, and again, I know Michael, you know, could maybe give us different scenarios of, you know, here's with the grocery tax, here's with the one percent, here's with both. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to see.
What scares me is the infrastructure. Is the storm sewers that need attention now.
Yeah.
I mean, I I had a water main break down my street and it flooded my yard for hours.
Can I ask?
It was floating.
Dennis, how old is the, how old are the water mains around here?
Well, I don't know.
About, I mean, you go post-World War II.
The main street's gonna be a couple of years.
Okay, I will just say one thing. I was there and it's not the same thing. I was there in the village in Dixie, and they didn't have water for two weeks.
Yeah.
Letting advise to you, you don't want to be in that situation.
Right.
Cause he was the one who helped us get an emergency water line.
Blue Island.
From Blue Island.
All right, I was there.
I was here, I know.
Good job, team.
Yeah, well, so I'm just saying, it's.
We gotta do, you gotta heat your water to heat a hydrant for two, three weeks and keep asking for more.
Who are these people gonna yell at?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's seventy-one miles of mains, I think, you know, cause we keep expanding too.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, very good discussion.
Yeah, wait, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the locusts to come next. What's the next, rather than Nutella's is gonna happen?
Well, I go to do them same.
All right, we have.
There's, there are things called, you know, like discussions about like doing a little both maybe. You know, we don't have to go jump the shark and say, oh, we're gonna cut everything and not do anything. We can do things that we can do and we might have to make some cuts here and there or delay some projects. Because we can't just keep saying that there's money out there for these taxpayers to pay. They're not gonna be happy about this. I understand there's a need and don't get me wrong, I understand it, I get it. But as someone who just talked to a lot of people and about three months ago or two months ago over this last election, they are taxed to the hilt. So I get we need it, but we need to be able, if we're gonna do this, we gotta justify it to the people out there. We gotta be open with them. We gotta tell them exactly what's happening and why Springfield did this and where this money is coming from or why, where this money went and why we do it. Because what they're seeing and and this, I know we all see this, a lot of people are loving what we're doing. We're doing a lot of great things. But there's a lot of people also that are saying we're spending a lot of money, which we have been, but it was all needed. And we're gonna have more needs. I get it, but we just gotta be able to communicate it and express what we're doing and why we're doing it. There is, there are people to blame for this situation. And they're not the ones sitting in this room. It's the ones down in Springfield. We need to make it well-known that these are the people that are making us do this and everything else, because this is, this is, you know, once again, we are the representatives of the people. If you went to the people right now and said, what would you like? They probably want a mixture. You know, let's keep our 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 spending down to the, to the, to the requirements and what we need to do. And yeah, maybe we need to raise some tax dollars here and maybe increase it a little bit. But we don't have to necessarily jump and go into the full amount just because it makes it easier on everybody or us. So I think we just need to think about it. And once again, I'm not against a tax increase if we have to and we can justify it and everything else. I get it, but I just think we need to be very open with the the public about it, else this could, this could not be good. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Public.
Yes, I am, so let you know, I'm sure president. And I grew up pretty poor. I don't have a problem with your taxes. As a person that loves this community, is my responsibility that the services continue. So I would be in favor of taxes. I can tell you this, growing up poor, I will look for other ways of of not paying that tax, so to speak. So does that mean I don't want to pay the one percent, I go over the line, I pay less. I will, you know, and it's not like every day. When we grew up, we got to go into town maybe once every two weeks to get groceries. Or you stay at every single, I mean, hot bottles I liked it as a kid. Just to be able to get a popsicle, it was unbelievable. But people will come when they, when they, not that welcome, I would say. Everyone that's above the medium income, probably this is not gonna bother them at all, these taxes. But everyone below that medium are gonna stop looking for other ways to make up for that tax increase. And that's means, I like to see your numbers after a year of initiating the taxes. If that twenty percent don't go down to eighteen, sixteen percent, where people are now going to Wisconsin more often to shop, because you don't pay sale tax on groceries here, Wisconsin. And then your other big problem is the Costco's and Sam's Club's. Probably take a lot of your purse money. Those people, same thing. They will go there once a week maybe and stock up. And that's, you know, the way that people shop these days. I can tell you this, I don't know what Menards grocery, if that gets charged, but Menards is eleven percent off. And this is one of the ways, I would do a lot more grocery shopping at Menards, cause I'm getting a one percent rebate. It was such a one percent increase. So there's other way, I mean, there are people who start looking for ways to try and save their pennies.
If to clarify, this, you're, you're receiving your one percent reduction in grocery tax in Antioch under the proposed one percent non-home rule sales tax. You will receive a one percent reduction on your grocery tax, so you won't be going anywhere.
That's possible. I can tell you how many stores I shop in Antioch.
Oh, don't. Yeah, um, I will thank you, Paul. So again, I'm glad we brought it up, we're, you know, stir the pot a little bit, get the discussion going. And again, this is gonna have to be a June, July cow slash boat, so just be ready for, you know, start doing your homework on this stuff. Uh, last thing before we go, cause let's wrap up shortly, you know, development updates. I think we can all agree that when these developments come, you know, whether looking for handouts or whatever, especially when it comes to the marketplace. Uh, we're waiting for a report from S B Friedman on the TIF study. We've been very clear to them, that's gonna be a pay-as-you-go type of thing. There's a core development group that I went off to Las Vegas that has the Chipotle and the tropical smoothie and the Illinois Bowl and enjoy these places. Like, when can we get started? It's not us. We're pushing the developer. We had to keep pushing the developer to get moving on this, Howard.
They don't even want to pay twenty thousand dollars for H R dreams to review.
Yeah, and so again.
This is ridiculous. We're talking about peanuts here.
And we, and maybe they're just not the right developer for this. Maybe we encourage them to sell the development to somebody else. So we'll be working through that, the downtown stuff as it comes through, whatever, we'll talk about that. I Howard bring that. I'm sure the one for Village Hall will be coming first. I'm sure the one for the Saint Peter School will also be coming shortly, so you're gonna be seeing those two fairly soon. Both market rates, once fifty-five and older, one for the Village Hall would be just a general fill. And then, you know, for next time, I'll circulate some of the things we talked about for the next quarter meeting to be looking at, preparing like the Centennial Park stuff, the sales tax, you know, the Culver Open Knoll stuff, bike path visioning. And then, yeah, hopefully. I appreciate everybody taking time to do this. I, I don't know how you feel, but I think these are important meetings because they're more just roundtable, open discussions instead of a formal board and going back and forth. So we've had success on these things for people who are new. I hope that continues. So anyone else want to like say anything or suggestions for next time or, you know, anything that we missed today that we didn't talk about?
Well, in a situation like this, if we can't do the sales tax, people are gonna have to start paying for parking for events, stuff like that, because we're gonna have to recuperate money one way or another, like you say, pay as you go. You wanna go to a park, you pay.
Yeah.
Stop there. These are basic services.
Public art and murals?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Um, so, yeah, I like, you know, thanks for, we had these facade grants, we talked about lighting. I really would like to get back and I think we have some money set aside, but I really like when we're doing those murals and those ghost signs downtown. I think it's really getting some character. I know there was some, um, uh, condemnation about like, uh, the design on one of them, but I think the side of the bookstore would be like a perfect side, but part for like a welcome to Antioch type of sign there.
This is great, but it's not signage. This is what I'm trying to create to everyone. It's not a sign.
No.
It's a resolution going through your, your village board.
Yeah.
Do we have partners with this?
I do, um, what will we use for the last ghost signs? Um, I think we put a little money in the budget for one or two of these. Actually, the lady who owns the building and the bookstore, she was really interested in working with us and even contributing, I think, to the artwork mural, you know, ideally, I'd love to see better signage like, you know, um, arches or something like welcome to downtown or, you know, Main Street.
Nine thousand.
Okay, so, yeah, these are the.
But at that moment, I said, I can't help you because it's not a sign. We don't allow for murals as a sign. A mural is conveying a message. A sign is conveying a message for your business.
Yeah.
She's not conveying, you know, come and shop with my yoga.
But what did we do? What did we do? We did the ghost signs, that project.
I wasn't here.
Okay, I'll, we'll have to dig that up. Okay, well, okay, so we'll have to dig that up, but I like to keep those things.
Yeah.
I, I know some municipalities, uh, some friendships I have with, that they are pushing through multiple murals in their communities. Now, they were telling me they're going to, uh, obtain money through grants and, um, some sort of arts-based foundations. Uh, I don't know if we were at that stage yet, but I could reach out to them, talk to them and get the layout.
And I think we engaged, people do last time, I think we engaged the art gallery. I mean, they gotta have resources for us too, you know, so it's like, let's make, again, the community projects, but I think that makes Antioch unique. I mean, we try.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's their draw. They're, they're saying that they're gonna push through, um, three neurons in the community because they anticipate having a lot of people just gonna come out to take pictures of it. And so that builds foot traffic. And so they're gonna aim at having them.
We can all stand in front of the angel wings, like a bunch of angels.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, my question here, especially for trustees, that one hundred thousand dollars, how would you like to see that money spent? One entity doing a, a marquee sign, did they? One entity doing a, a marquee sign that they, they want, want, want? Or would you rather give this money to like different businesses and owners to renovate their building? Because this is where I, I kind of put the cap foot on that, so I said that the application and the original ordinance, they don't match. My predecessor decided to do a resolution instead of amended ordinance, so right now, I told P and L Theater. Until I revise the ordinance, I can't give any money, but that's just a stopgap, as a group.
And they want a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, they want a hundred thousand, and they want to build the marquee at their manner, at their style. Because I had a meeting between Wanderling and with Reggie, we sat, I thought we had a compromise. Make it a smaller, will be more historical to Victorian standards. Reggie walked and said, yeah, we could work with that, and then I get an email two days later from their sign company, no, we want the marquee that we presented a year ago. Which is our tackle, and it's just not in fitting with the building. And that's where I said, well, you know, because in our application, it says a hundred thousand, you can apply for it.
Okay.
In grant money, and I, I, if you look at the original ordinance, ten thousand dollars, I don't know where ten thousand went to a hundred thousand.
And typo.
Also, in the original ordinance, you have to go various committees. Under Michael's ordinance, you go through the downtown historic preservation commission, just for, you know, you know. You know, discussing the item, but it goes to the village board, I need to revise, because those things jump out. In the original ordinance, um, zones B one, B two, B three, plus the downtown. And the application Michael has at Yerica is basically the downtown area, he named all the streets. So there, there's a, this, this, you know, this continuation of information.
I remember that that was a problem, um, we did help someone on Route eighty-three. Uh, just the, the people would put the coating or something on the windows when you buy a vehicle.
All the, 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 the guys that.
Yeah, we helped him, and a couple of trustees were upset, because it should be for downtown only, but.
But the P and L Theater.
Are moving into our town.
So P and L Theater, besides the sign, also wants to do tongue pointing, they want to do everything with our guy, and I don't feel that's just. Because it's just not one business, we should be looking at the whole downtown, like the mayor said, what about the, the backs of the building? Especially with you, Village Hall is gonna, you know, I'm looking at the bigger picture. Now, if, if the trustee says, Howard, just give the money to them, I'll be more than happy to, you know, provide, you know, the materials to you, and you, you'll approve it. But in situations like this, right, in situations like this, I had a similar situation in Blue Island. It was a business development grant program, and Blue Island is no more than ten thousand dollars, or imagine rent. We had a downtown theater, right, they went for a marquee, hundred and twenty-five thousand, Blue Island paid ninety thousand, but they went through a resolution. They went in front of the village board, it proved their case, this theater has been closed for ten, fifteen years on Western Avenue. Western Avenue is like your main street, we're gonna make this into a movie theater, we're gonna also make this into a banquet hall. It's the Goretto family that purchased the property, that's beggars pizza, they had money, they invested money in the theater. They asked for the grant money to do the facade, and to do the marquee. Here, it's a theater, I get it, the art, not against it, but when they're asking for a hundred thousand, just right off the bat, it's just insulting. Because what do you show to the other businesses?
Yeah, and I think.
Let that money be used for murals.
Yeah, and I don't know when the ten thousand was in, I mean, I don't know if that's from the nineties or early two thousand, obviously, we should probably adjust that for inflation, so whether it's. Twenty at this point, or twenty-five cap, but I agree that, you know.
Insulting is he went through a resolution, so he, he went through a lower standard to get this approved. He, he manipulated the, the guidelines for H P C, and he used that as the guidelines for facade program. With H P C's involvement, and like, kind of like saying, yeah, we support it or we don't.
Yeah, I would say, I would say their role is only they could bless it or not, not as the dollar amount, just to look, and then the board decides that this is. The funding is coming from us.
So it's not me trying to kill the program, it's just I put a stopgap, because this group really wants the money.
Okay, well, I'm gonna get to the board, no, I appreciate it, um, but, you know, we did a program, we painted top street, we tried it. I don't know, it didn't look very good after a year, you know, like, I'd rather put the paint on the side of a building than on a road. But I think, I think that we have the ability to make the downtown, not only like a restaurant, business district, but also an art district. We have a movie theater, we have a live theater, we have an art gallery, we have music uh venues, like, we have a unique opportunity to make it like an art district, to make that really market. And our, the wall murals and stuff are really hard to.
I know, um, so I know one of the muralists that did uh, the carnival restaurant in Chicago. And, and that was, uh, that was about a hundred grand, and, but you gotta keep in mind the size of the building, right? He also did, uh, for the bills of, uh, well, Met, a police memorial. And so he has, again, uh, relatively knowledgeable on how to work with. I'm reaching out to all the municipalities going forward, then, um, to get their take on how they obtained their funding, because I know that they were talking about rents. And so I didn't know where we were at with that.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think it's a great program, I think we keep that.
Mayor in this situation, maybe create an ordinance that deals with murals.
Yeah, I'll go look back, I'll go look back to what we did the last time, just, we did it, I don't know how we did it.
I think it was just, I think it was business, it's free with the business, and then a cost, cost expenditure.
Where I think we're better off, we're better served, that feel more justified if we do multiple.
Spreading, I agree, I agree.
So I feel.
All right, well, can I answer one of the questions?
Only if it's good.
Are we doing ghost gangster tours right now?
I have ghost tours on my.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Spot situation, I have not been to more than one.
Brought to you by, I saw you laugh. All right, uh, had that though, um, anything else for the good of the cause, otherwise, uh, I probably need an actual motion adjournment. Uh, can I get a motion adjourned?
So.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Martinez, all in favor, any opposed, we are adjourned at three twenty-five, thank you. Enjoy the farmer's market, the concert.
Yes, come to the farmer's market.